We now call the Board of Education Combined Meeting to order. The time is now 5:31 PM. Ms. Raymond, please let the record show that all members are present. Item 2.02, "The Pledge of Allegiance." Mr. Hall?
Thank you. Good evening, Board members. Tonight, we are joined by a student from Delaware Elementary School who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance, Onyx Harkins. Would you please come forward? And before I read a little bit of information about Onyx, I want to acknowledge that you'll notice a theme of art this evening during honoring excellence, and that's because we recently held the All-School Art Exhibition at the Springfield Art Museum, and we are now featuring many of the Best in Show winners and their work here at Craft Administrative Center. So you're going to hear a lot more about the All-School Art Exhibition in just a few moments. But in the meantime, I want to introduce Onyx. He is a fifth grader at Delaware who loves art. This year, his artwork was chosen to be the featured design on the SPS Holiday Card that Dr. Lathan sends to community leaders and other partners. So we'll pull that up because we want everyone to see Onyx's beautiful artwork. Let's pull that slide up. So as a student at Delaware, Onyx serves on the Student Council, and he participates in Unified Schools, which supports building inclusive school environments for all abilities. We are honored to have Onyx with us tonight. We would also like to recognize any other members of the Delaware family who are present with us to support him. Please stand or wave if you are here to support Onyx. So at this time, we invite our audience and for all of you to please join as Onyx leads the Pledge of Allegiance. Onyx, whenever you're ready, please take it away.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Oh, okay. Come out here.
I'm not sure if you're going to eat people when you get a car. [laughter]
Sorry, I'm the hard teacher.
Good job. Thank you. So at this time, we have a few more SPS artists that we want to recognize. So as I mentioned before, each spring, the Springfield Art Museum invites student artists in kindergarten through 12th grade to exhibit outstanding work. This celebration of Youth Art Month is the longest-running exhibition initiative of the art museum, which began in 1932. Fifteen SPS students were chosen to receive Best of Show awards this year for their art, and some of them were able to be with us tonight. As I call the names of those winners, we invite them to come forward as we display their artwork on the screen. And we'll begin with high school students. First, Karen Dean, Mia Whitney, Samantha Bigby, Ellie Lennon, and Elizabeth Juan Castro. And we'll pause, and we'll take a group photo at the very end, okay? So please stay with us. Middle school students, Ara Petter, Logan Lackey, Lydia Lloyd, and Zoe Odom. And our elementary school students, Trey Barge, Dawson Smith, Ashilis Davis, Mac Metcalf, Anna Pham, and Genesis Martinez Calderon. We'll have this group please come forward right here with Dr. Lathan and Mrs. Brunner for a photo. Well done, and please join us in congratulating these students on their outstanding artistic talents. That artwork is...
I just wanted to go see where their artwork is.
It's displayed in the classroom next door, so they're going to show the students where that's being displayed. Our next recognition is an outstanding art educator, Mr. Gregory Binney. Would you please come forward, Mr. Binney? Mr. Binney teaches art at Westport Middle School and was recently named Middle School Art Educator of the Year by the Missouri Art Education Association. Mr. Binney has taught art at Westport Middle School for 13 years. With a total of 15 years in art education, he has profoundly impacted his students' lives and made contributions to the field. Mr. Binney was recognized because of his focus on making art accessible to all students and creating a classroom environment that encourages self-expression and fosters confidence. Congratulations, Mr. Binney.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And at this time, we will pause for just a moment to allow our art students and families an opportunity to exit if they choose, and we will bring in a next group of honorees. We have a large group of honorees tonight. Thank you all for being here. [applause] Thank you very much for having me. Congratulations. And at this time, we will pause for just a moment to allow our art students and families an opportunity to exit if they choose, and we will bring in a next group of honorees. We have a large group of honorees tonight. Thank you all for being here. [applause] Thank you for your patience while we had everyone file in. We will go ahead and begin with our Missouri 100 Scholars. Two Kickapoo High School seniors have been honored for their outstanding academic achievement, Colin Keltner and Brandon Quan. Would you please come forward? Colin and Brandon have been selected as two of the top academic students in the state for the 2025 Missouri Scholars 100 Program. This statewide initiative is organized by the Missouri Association of Secondary School Principals, recognizes and celebrates the accomplishments of 100 outstanding students from the class of 2025. They were honored May 4th during a special luncheon hosted in Columbia. To qualify as a Missouri Scholars 100, students must hold a minimum GPA of 3.75, a minimum ACT score of 29, or a minimum SAT score of 1280, rank in the upper 10% of their class, and engage in advanced coursework in mathematics, science, English, and foreign language. Additionally, nominees must exhibit excellent attendance, exemplary citizenship within the school, and active participation in the school's activity program. Congratulations to Colin and Brandon. [applause]
Please feel free to come up front. We do have seats, and we're not taking up a collection, so you can come on up front.
Participation in archery continues to grow at Springfield Public Schools. This year, 3,784 archers met the academic attendance and citizenship qualifications that are required to compete in archery. In March, nine SPS teams and nine individuals competed in the state championships for the Missouri National Archery in the school's program. This is the second-largest state archery tournament in the country. Tonight, we have with us several of the students who excelled in that tournament. Logan Sanderson and Killian Pressley are from Cherokee Middle School. Logan and Killian, are you here?
Yes.
Logan and Killian, are you here?
Yes.
Logan placed third among all middle school boys, and Killian placed 10th among eighth grade boys. Addie Franklin, Addie, are you here? Addie Franklin attends Wilson's Creek Intermediate School, and Addie placed second among sixth grade girls. McKinsey Hafer, are you here, McKinsey? McKinsey Hafer is from Kickapoo High School, and she placed 12th among all high school girls. And finally, a Cherokee team placed eighth in Missouri. Coach Christie Drybread, would you please come forward with your team? And I understand that there was another school event tonight, so we may have only a few of our students represented, but I want to read the names of those that were on the team. That team includes Alex Burkhardt, Alexis Reyes, Amelia Hutchins, Aviana Witherspoon, Bren Rojas, Campbell Tierney, Carson Nesbit, Cy Kunz, Ellie Dunaway, Erin Williams, Grant Stafford, Henry Stinson, Hudson Elliott, Isaiah Champ, Jax Brady, Jessica Strickland, Jude Dooling, Juliana Landono, Killian Pressley, Landon Miller, Logan Sanderson, Noah Wilder, Preston Porus, and Sabrina Barnett. Let's give the Cherokee team a round of applause. We're going to take a group photo, but we want to just give a special shout-out. We appreciate dedicated coaches like Coach Drybread and others like Susan Provance and Teresa Miller who support this program. Archery would not be the quality experience it is for so many of our students without these individuals and many others like them. So let's take a photo with this outstanding group. Coach Neville too. Yes. Coach Neville is... Coach Neville as well.
Coach, let's put you on the back. No, just behind those... If you would just did behind those guys, I'm sorry. Just a little tall. Okay, thank you.
Congratulations, team. Thank you. It is now my privilege to present the 2025-2026 Teacher of the Year and finalists for Springfield Public Schools. Please come forward as I call your name. Danielle O'Neil, Amanda Brown, Rochelle Peak, Tanner Schmidt, and Heidi Stagner. On Friday, May 2nd, the Foundation for Springfield Public Schools hosted the annual Celebrate SPS Banquet. This is always a wonderful event, and we appreciate the efforts of Natalie Murdock and the foundation staff and volunteers who work so hard to honor SPS employees. At that event, Danielle O'Neil, a physical education teacher at Sherwood Elementary, was named the 2025-2026 Teacher of the Year. Danielle started her career with SPS in 2016, and then taught at Pershing Middle School and Delaware Elementary before transitioning to her current role at Sherwood. We also want to recognize the other teachers who were selected from approximately 250 nominations as finalists for Teacher of the Year. And when we say 250, they were 250 quality nominations, so this is an incredible honor to be standing here, and we thank all of you. These nominees include... Or these finalists include Amanda Brown, third-grade teacher at Sunshine Elementary; Rochelle Peak, a communication arts teacher with Launch Virtual Learning; Tanner Schmidt, a second-grade teacher at Jeffries Elementary; and Heidi Stagner, an art teacher at Field Elementary. Congratulations to each of you. Thank you for being with us tonight, and we'd love to get a group photo with Dr. Lathan and Mrs. Brunner. Congratulations to each of you again. Up next, we will recognize our SPS staff ambassadors. For the past few years, SPS has invited community members and parents to participate in the SPS Ambassador Program. This year, we expanded that program to include SPS staff ambassadors. During two half-day experiences, these employees learned more about SPS with the goal of being informed and empowered advocates for our district. We are grateful to these employees who volunteered their time and have committed to using their voices and their actions to support the work of Springfield Public Schools. Tonight, I want to introduce members of the first class of SPS Staff Ambassadors. I'm going to read the list of those who participated. Some of them are able to join us tonight. We have a special certificate and a PIN to present to them, and we'll take a group photo as well. Heather Anderson, kindergarten teacher. Deanna Ballard, art teacher. Rhonda Blackfry, intensive support teacher. Amanda Brown, third-grade teacher. Terry Campbell, student access and opportunity coordinator. Rochelle Surtin, teacher PYP coordinator and instructional coach. Christian Sisneros, head custodian. Jennifer Curtis, paraprofessional. Rebecca Ferguson, communications arts. Jennifer Givens, third-grade teacher. Beverly Holly, accounting specialist. Sarah Hayder, accounting clerk. Amanda Larson, business teacher. Katie Liebeck, parent educator. Courtney Pennell, librarian. Jeffrey Pettibone, Title I instructional coach. Amanda Schaus, special education emotional support teacher. Amanda Swanson, early childhood special education teacher. Jenny Talbert, director of curriculum. Matthew Tucker, social studies teacher. Lindsay Windland, fourth-grade teacher. Lawrence Woolery, bus driver. Haley Youngblood, social studies teacher. Reagan Cash, technology projects coordinator. Alicia Johnson, first-grade teacher. Kim Leach, lead data engineer. Magdalena Mendez, paraprofessional. Melinda Moore, administrative assistant. Did you all notice the wide variety of employees that represent our entire district? And again, these staff members volunteered their time, stepped forward and said, "We want to learn more about our district. We want to be intentional about sharing the amazing work that's happening in our district every day." And so I just want to reiterate how much we appreciate these exemplary professionals for their dedication to their work every day and to continued learning. They were an extraordinary group. It was so great to have an opportunity to get to know each of them more individually and to provide unique experiences that allowed them to learn more about the district at large. So thank you again to each of you. We're going to make sure you have your certificate, your PIN, and we'd like to invite Dr. Lathan and Mrs. Brunner to get a photo with the group as well. Thank you. You sure can.
You got it. All right. I'm going to take it. All right, everybody. All right, on three, are we ready? Okay, everybody, window, one, two, three. Thank you very much.
To conclude our recognitions for tonight, we are pleased to honor the May Employee of the Month for Springfield Public Schools. The recipient this month is a teacher and a coach at Hillcrest High School who has helped many students achieve their goals, including getting back on track to graduate. According to Hillcrest Principal Dr. Rob Kroll, this individual does an amazing job of supporting students who are seeking to graduate via the Missouri Options Program. He tutors his students, he schedules their testing, and he provides transportation for students without a ride to the testing site. Recently, he gave up time during his spring break to help a student progress through the program and ultimately to graduate. Along with his teaching duties, he is also Hillcrest's head girls' basketball coach. Our girls' team had one of their best seasons in program history, going 19-9. More importantly, Coach loves his players and is intentional in preparing them for life after high school. Let's watch this video to learn more about Justin Gerald.
Really, the unique thing about my class or that I really try to pride myself on a little bit is trying to get them life-ready. So Missouri Options is a great opportunity for a student who might not be on track to graduate on time with their class. So what happens is they come in here, and they try to make up whatever they need to. We have the list of things that they need in order to graduate through Missouri Options. Not hardly do I get somebody in here that doesn't want to graduate, you know, and have that type of success. They just don't know how to go about it.
I think the thing that Justin has really mastered in a lot of ways is that he's creative, he's positive, and he's inspirational. He's just a person that people want to be around. He fills people's cups. And I don't even know that he's aware that he's doing it, but I mean, students, they just are... They're magnetized to a personality like that.
2025-2026 Teacher of the Year and Finalists for Springfield Public Schools. Please come forward as I call your name. Danielle O'Neal, Amanda Brown, Rochelle Peake, Tanner Schmidt, and Heidi Stagner. On Friday, May 2nd, the Foundation for Springfield Public Schools hosted the annual Celebrate SPS banquet. This is always a wonderful event, and we appreciate the efforts of Natalie Murdoch and the foundation's staff and volunteers who work so hard to honor SPS employees. At that event, Danielle O'Neal, a physical education teacher at Sherwood Elementary, was named the 2025-2026 Teacher of the Year. Danielle started her career with SPS in 2016, and then taught at Pershing Middle School and Delaware Elementary before transitioning to her current role at Sherwood. We also want to recognize the other teachers who were selected from approximately 250 nominations as finalists for Teacher of the Year. And when we say 250, they were 250 quality nominations. So this is an incredible honor to be standing here, and we thank all of you. These nominees include, or these finalists include Amanda Brown, 3rd grade teacher at Sunshine Elementary; Rochelle Peake, a Communication Arts teacher with Launch Virtual Learning; Tanner Schmidt, a 2nd grade teacher at Jeffries Elementary; and Heidi Stagner, an art teacher at Field Elementary. Congratulations to each of you. Thank you for being with us tonight, and we'd love to get a group photo with Dr. Lathan Up next, we will recognize our SPS staff ambassadors. For the past few years, SPS has invited community members and parents to participate in the SPS Ambassador Program. This year, we expanded that program to include SPS staff ambassadors. During two half-day experiences, these employees learned more about SPS with the goal of being informed and empowered advocates for our district. We are grateful to these employees who volunteered their time and have committed to using their voices and their actions to support the work of Springfield Public Schools. Tonight, I want to introduce members of the first class of SPS staff ambassadors. I'm going to read the list of those who participated. Some of them are able to join us tonight. We have a special certificate and a PIN to present to them, and we'll take a group photo as well. Heather Anderson, kindergarten teacher; Deanna Ballard, art teacher; Rhonda Blackfry, intensive support teacher; Amanda Brown, 3rd grade teacher; Terry Campbell, Student Access and Opportunity Coordinator; Rochelle Surtin, Teacher PYP Coordinator and Instructional Coach; Christian Sisneros, Head Custodian; Jennifer Curtis, Paraprofessional; Rebecca Ferguson, Communications Arts; Jennifer Givens, 3rd grade teacher; Beverly Holly, Accounting Specialist; Sarah Hayder, Accounting Clerk; Amanda Larson, Business Teacher; Katie Leebeck, Parent Educator; Courtney Pennell, Librarian; Jeffrey Pettibone, Title I Instructional Coach; Amanda Schaus, Special Education Emotional Support Teacher; Amanda Swanson, Early Childhood Special Education Teacher; Jenny Talbert, Director of Curriculum; Matthew Tucker, Social Studies Teacher; Lindsay Windland, 4th grade teacher; Lawrence Woolery, Bus Driver; Haley Youngblood, Social Studies Teacher; Reagan Cash, Technology Projects Coordinator; Alicia Johnson, 1st grade teacher; Kim Leach, Lead Data Engineer; Magdalena Mendez, Paraprofessional; Melinda Moore, Administrative Assistant. Did you all notice the wide variety of employees that represent our entire district? And again, these staff members volunteered their time, stepped forward and said, "We want to learn more about our district. We want to be intentional about sharing the amazing work that's happening in our district every day." And so I just want to reiterate how much we appreciate these exemplary professionals for their dedication to their work every day and to continued learning. They were an extraordinary group. It was so great to have an opportunity to get to know each of them more individually and to provide unique experiences that allowed them to learn more about the district at large. So thank you again to each of you. We're going to make sure you have your certificate, your PIN, and we'd like to invite Dr. Lathan and Mrs. Brunner to get a photo with the group as well. Thank you. You got it. Okay. All right. I'm going to take it. All right, everybody. All right, on three, are we ready? Okay, everybody, window, one, two, three. To conclude our recognitions for tonight, we are pleased to honor the May Employee of the Month for Springfield Public Schools. The recipient this month is a teacher and a coach at Hillcrest High School who has helped many students achieve their goals, including getting back on track to graduate. According to Hillcrest Principal Dr. Rob Kroll, this individual does an amazing job of supporting students who are seeking to graduate via the Missouri Options Program. He tutors his students, he schedules their testing, and he provides transportation for students without a ride to the testing site. Recently, he gave up time during his spring break to help a student progress through the program and ultimately to graduate. Along with his teaching duties, he is also Hillcrest's Head Girls Basketball Coach. Our girls team had one of their best seasons in program history, going 19-9. More importantly, Coach loves his players and is intentional in preparing them for life after high school. Let's watch this video to learn more about Justin Gerald.
Really, the unique thing about my class, or that I really try to pride myself on a little bit, is trying to get them life-ready. So Missouri Options is a great opportunity for a student who might not be on track to graduate on time with their class. So what happens is they come in here and they try to make up whatever they need to. We have the list of things that they need in order to graduate through Missouri Options. Hardly do I get somebody in here that doesn't want to graduate, you know, and have that type of success. They just don't know how to go about it.
I think the thing that Justin has really mastered in a lot of ways is that he's creative, he's positive, and he's inspirational. He's just a person that people want to be around. He fills people's cups. And I don't even know that he's aware that he's doing it, but I mean, students, they just are, they're magnetized to a personality like that. And his work with graduates that are on the brink of making it or not breaking it through our Missouri Options Program, the way that he comes in over his own spring break that people don't even know about and works with students to help them cross the finish line because of different trials and things that are going on in their life. He's just a guy always overcoming barriers for kids, and he's a special, special guy.
The number-one reward is, let's say, the kid that got left behind graduated. Hearing their name and them walking across the stage, and you're going to hear me in the stands, you'll hear me just holler because we've had a relationship all year long. And sometimes I may be the only one yelling for them. Yeah, I mean, really, it's an unfortunate situation, but it's such a rewarding situation and a reward when they cross that stage because they were left behind and now they are at the finish line because they had this opportunity. I don't think there's another place for me like this one. It wouldn't fit me like teaching at Hillcrest fits, and it's not for everybody. It really isn't, but it is for me.
Coach Gerald, would you come forward?
Uh, thank you. You know, I had that conversation the other day, and I didn't know that video was going to be that good, I want you to know. You know, it brings tears to your eyes, just kind of understanding what you do and maybe the impact that you have. It's going to be okay. But, and these young ladies back here too. That one you saw in the picture is my daughter, but that's kind of when we started our little basketball situation. I've had a lot of these girls for, you know, as a high school coach, you get four years to interact with a high school student, you know. But they're lifers, so it's been longer than four years, and it's just awesome.
We have great representation from Hillcrest here tonight, too, so congratulations, Coach. And that concludes honoring excellence this evening. Thank you, Board members.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Wow. And thank you to everyone that came here tonight to celebrate all these wonderful things going on in Springfield Public Schools. So, our next agenda item is the approval of the agenda. Our recommended action is that the board approve the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Thomas Tate and seconded by Board Member Huff. I've just got six. Okay, the motion passes with a vote of seven. We now have come to the portion of our meeting where we hear from speakers. The Board of Education welcomes comments about the issues being discussed. The Board uses this time in our meeting to listen to the public, but will not comment or engage with the public during the meeting. The Board allows for up to 10 speakers per public comment period. The Board Chair will call on individuals in the order in which they signed up. Substitutions are not permitted. Each speaker will have, will be limited to three minutes and will be timed by the Board Secretary. Comments must be acceptable for a board, for a business and family-friendly environment. Inappropriate language, gestures, or personal attacks will not be tolerated. It is inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in an open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. If you have materials that you want to share, please place them in the tray on the podium, and they will be distributed to board members following the meeting. There will be a timer on the screen to help you keep track of how much time you have left.
Good evening. My name is Laura Mullins, and I'm the current President of SNEA. Tonight, I would like to provide an update on the board's strategic plan, specifically SMART Goal 2.3.1, which commits SPS to creating a plan to address employee compensation and retention. First, let's discuss the retention rate. In a recent DESI report included below the data from that, the SPS 3-year retention rate was only 45.5%, far below both regional and comparably sized districts, as well as the state average. Last year, I spoke of a historic high for SPS of over 600 employees leading the district, with half of those being educators. This year is on pace to be similar. During the last board meeting, Susan Provance referenced the saying, "Employees don't quit their jobs, they quit their bosses," and I also believe this to be true. A basic element of employee satisfaction is the ability to provide input, so I asked about this year's opportunities. And the district responded, "We do not have to send a survey for the 24-25 school year for MSIP accountability, and the district is not doing leadership surveys this year." Next, let's discuss the district's compensation. The target of SMART, of the SMART Goal is to provide a total compensation package that ranks at the top of all school districts in the Southwest region of the state. For several of our employee groups, SPS is gravely failing. Our school resource officers and school psychologists are underpaid by almost 15% and our paraprofessionals by over 10%, just to name a few. It should also be noted that all surrounding districts will offer annualized pay for support staff next year. All of this while SPS still has an operating fund balance around 10% higher than the 17% required. One employee group that does rank SPS at the top is administrators. SPS principals alone are paid upwards of 10% higher than area principals. The board-approved administrator contracts for 25-26 reflect a 10% expense increase for building admin and a 14% expense increase for the 14 employees in executive leadership. There was also $80,000 allotted for the promotion of seven administrators. While we continue to hear how much needs to be cut from the budget, this becomes a hard pill to swallow. Even when looking at the cuts made earlier this year, only 3% of the cuts affected administrative positions, and since then, at least one new administrative position has been created. The strategic plan has been in place for two years now, and the gaps continue to grow. If you truly value our educators and support staff, the very people who keep our schools running and our students supported, you must move beyond blind trust and into action. The strategic plan is only as strong as its execution, and right now, the numbers tell a story that cannot be ignored. Employee voices are being silenced, essential staff are being underpaid, and administrative spending continues to grow. I urge this board to reflect on the commitments made in SMART Goal 2.3.1 and ask yourselves, are we honoring those commitments or just checking boxes? It's time for SPS to lead with integrity, transparency, and fairness. Our employees and ultimately our students deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Our next speaker tonight is Carl Hurd.
Good evening. Dr. Lathan and Board members, I'd like to welcome the two new board members. I'm sorry I'd be breaking the rules if I said your name. But anyway, my presentation today is in three parts, and my comments are strictly for you board members. Part one, your election. Part two, chastisement for your failures. Part three, praise for your accomplishments. So let's begin. Part one, you were duly elected by the voters and sworn in by County Clerk Shane Scholler. I believe you are kind, intelligent, and want the best for 25,000 students and over 3,500 employees. Oh, sorry. Part two, you have failed to develop a cellphone policy that sufficiently limits use of cellphones. Two, you have failed to listen to over 1,100 employees on annualized pay. You hide behind auditors and lawyers. Three, discipline, you decide. Is your discipline policy failing? If not, why are so many teachers leaving the profession? Four, your graduation rate is deceitful. You get that rate by dumbing down education. I have specific examples. Five, if all your votes are 7-0, like the last meeting, you are not representing many voters. Six, to applaud some test scores that are barely above state average illustrates the board's failure to set high expectations. Low test scores could be cumulative effect of other failures, like cellphone policy, failing discipline, and curriculum. Seven, your public comment part of the board meeting is a failure. Every speaker deserves to be heard. I would like to present how the board did in 2011. Moving to, on, part three, board successes. You are good at passing large bond issues. You are good at recognizing accomplishments. Let me say you are very good at recognizing accomplishment of employees and students like tonight. Three, you are good at collecting data, telephone calls, and et cetera. Four, you are good at rubber stamping, superintendence, and closing. Your failures is how you can grow. Failure is not forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pat Scott.
May I make a comment, ask a question before my time starts? You don't have to answer. The first speaker, I noticed no board, only one board member was paying attention. I don't know if the rest were reading. They weren't looking at the speaker. Okay, just a comment. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to, the opportunity, to address the new board. Thank you, ladies. You ladies know you're facing very challenging times. Or do you? It's certainly not going to be a tea party. It's not going to be what ladies sometimes think they're going to spend their time with. Your job in attending these meetings, I'm sure, are going to be full of challenges. I have for many years followed the progress of Springfield Public Schools. I was in the business world for 25, 30 years. When I retired, I started subbing in the Springfield schools. I loved it, and what a change I've seen. Of course, we've seen a change in the world, too. You know the statistics, but our board and our administration doesn't seem to want to address these test scores. We have some wonderful success stories, and we've saw, seen some of these today. But when it comes to talking about comparing to area schools, comparing to schools in the state, whenever you've got math, science, reading, and you've got 40, 50, 60% below grade level, that's not acceptable for this, for this district. And I, we spend millions of dollars literally on programs. I'm just going to assume this is going to be some kind of a dog and pony show on some kind of a program here. I've seen that over the years as I've attended the meetings. Whether it was Galileo or some other program, to have 14 or 15 staff members working on a program, come and present it to the teachers, then we have teachers come up here and say, clap their hands and say, "Oh, this is wonderful. We'll do it." The fact is, we have teachers in this district who are educated to be teachers. They know what to do. I think they're over-supervised. I've always thought we have way too many administration. We've had, what, four or five buildings for years. Now we may have three, I don't know, with the new one out on Kansas. Don't get me wrong, I admire the teachers, and we have many good students. What I don't agree with is apparently the administration does not always even listen to the representative for these teachers, and that's a shame. These teachers have important things to say. The fact is, a district like Springfield is like a large ship. It needs to be steered by a captain. Our ship is listing one way and another. It's not been given any direction, and it's going to sink if it doesn't get some direction. The board has, the one job is to supervise the captain and tell the captain what to do. Say to the captain, "This is what we want," and expect to have it. Example, a cellphone policy. You're the boss. 30 days of cellphone policy, not four years. And there's other things like that, I'm sure.
Ms. Scott, your time is up. Thank you. Our next item is 4.0 Consent Agenda. Moving on to our consent agenda, these are the minutes: K-Cob reports, treasure reports, and personnel reports. Our recommended action is that the board approve the consent agenda items 4.01 to 4.04. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Kincaid. Is there a second? Seconded by Board Member Smart. The motion passes with seven votes. Next is Item 5.01, 2025-2026 Budget Development Introduction and Overview. Executive Director of Business Services, Ms. Kara Stasil, will be joining us this evening to provide another update on the 2025-2026 budget process. Ms. Stasil?
Good evening, Board. So tonight's budget development presentation is actually over the General and Teacher Fund, which we lovingly refer to as the Operating Fund. Thank you. The first slide this evening just kind of reviews that pie chart that we've seen before, and again, it calls out the two funds that we're going to be reviewing tonight, the General and the Teacher Fund. The General Fund is the fund that is used to account for all revenues and expenditures that aren't required by DESI to be recorded anywhere else, such as bond or capital or debt. And then the Teacher Fund is used to account for expenditures for certified staff and for tuition payments to other districts, and we'll get into that a little bit more in the presentation. So again, the Operating Fund is kind of where all of the day-to-day expenditures and really business happens, if you will, and it's where most of the budget development work takes So first, we'll start with a review of the Operating Fund revenue. So on the left is a listing of the sources of funds or revenue that support the Operating Fund and support the Operating Fund expenditures. So we have the fund balance carryover from a prior year, and that's what is used to calculate our fund balance percentage. We have local revenues, and some examples of those are listed below. One of our biggest one is our local tax, taxes that we receive, and then our proposition C sales tax. We have county revenues, state revenues, and again, the biggest state revenue is foundation formula. There's also some There's also some transportation state aid in there and early childhood. Those are the biggest categories for state revenue. We have federal revenue, such as Title I, special education, and our school lunch program, and then any interest income on those revenues. And then the pie chart kind of gives a breakdown of those sources of revenue. And you can see that local is our largest source of revenue, followed by state. But both of those together make almost, make up almost 90% of the revenue that supports the operating fund. So those revenues are used to support the operating fund expenditures, and we have four primary categories for expenditures, as defined by DESI. And those are salaries, benefits, purchased services, and supplies. And there are some examples listed below of the types of expenditures in each one of those categories. The pie chart also represents a breakdown of the expenditure by category. So again, salaries being our largest, followed by benefits, and the combination of those two represent almost 80% of all of our expenditures in the operating fund. The rest of those expenditures are purchased services and supplies. One item to note on here, when we talk about the salary and benefits being 80% of our operating budget, is that a measurement for most school districts is to keep that percentage between about 75 to 80% of your operating budget. And I've talked about that pretty much every year that I've been up here talking about this. But the, that is kind of a good indicator of the sustainability of your salary schedule and your staffing levels. So if you get too high above 80%, there's a likelihood that you're overstaffed or you're giving increases that are too large for your revenue to sustain. And if you're too far below that 75%, you're likely not giving enough raises or your staffing levels aren't adequate enough, and you could increase your staffing. So that's just something we like to keep our eye on every year. So this chart provides a breakdown of expenditures by both functional area or function and object. And so if you situate yourself to the graph, the functional area, you can kind of think of as the purpose. So what is the purpose of the expenditure? Is it to support instruction? Is it support services that support instruction? Or is it a community service, something like parent educators or early childhood services? And then the object is the type of expenditure being purchased. So we have salary and benefits that support instruction, purchased services, and supplies. So you can see, again, our largest expense are salary and benefits for instruction and then for support services. But then the bulk of our purchased services and supplies live in that support area. So think of utilities, substitute services, those things that aren't directly tied to the instruction process, but that support the instruction process. So first, we'll take a look at the salary expenditures. So this pie chart represents salaries by fund, so splitting out the General Fund from the Teachers Fund. And so DESI again dictates and gives guidance on what types of salaries can be coded to the General Fund and what types of salaries can be coded to the Teachers Fund. And the two determining, determinating factors are the nature of the employment, so is it instructionally related or not? And does that position require a certificate, a DESI issued certificate? If the answer to both of those questions is yes, it's instructionally related and the, the position needs a DESI certificate, then it is coded to the Teachers Fund. And so that's why the largest portion of our salaries are those Teachers Fund. If it is a classified position, not instruction-related, the position doesn't need a DESI certificate, it is coded to the General Fund. So again, taking that same salary data and breaking it up by functional area. Again, the functional area is kind of that purpose. Is it for the purpose of instruction? Is it for the purpose of support? Or is the purpose for community services? And so this breaks down the salary, and on the left side, next to that functional area, gives examples of the types of positions that would be coded within those functional areas. And then the pie chart represents the amount of salary that is coded to the instructional function area versus the support services versus the community services. And again, all of this coding and functional area and object code is all dictated by DESI. DESI provides the structure in their accounting manual that all school districts in Missouri must follow. So moving on to benefits, the pie chart that you see here represents the benefits by object type. So again, what is the type of benefit that is being represented in the pie chart? Our two largest types of benefits that the district has an expense for are retirement and then employee insurance. There are some definitions there for you on the right-hand side of the screen. For retirement, FICA Medicare, employee insurance, workers' compensation. And then we have some various small other types of insurance, such as long-term disability, life insurance, unemployment insurance. But make up a small portion. So we'll touch on the insurance benefit. Generally, employees in a regular position that has a full-time equivalency of either .5 to 1.0 qualify for benefits. And so this just gives a overview of some of the benefits that our employees receive at no cost to them. So as a district, we pay for, in 2025, $6,984 in medical insurance. So that amount of money, almost $7,000, is 100% paid for on two of our medical plans, the base plan and the health savings account plan. And so that amount of money does not come out of an employee's paycheck. It is paid for by the district. Similarly, on the dental insurance, SPS pays 71% of the employee-only basic plan, and that equates to $136.80 that does not come out of the employee's paycheck. We also provide a life insurance and long-term disability insurance, and there's, yeah, long-term disability insurance, and there's some descriptors, descriptors there, and that is provided at no cost to the employee. And of course, there are options for the employee to buy up on those things as well. And also, we have our retirement benefit. So all public school employees contribute to PSRS or PERS. PSRS stands for Public School Retirement System. And that contribution rate has remained unchanged since 2011, 2012, and that rate right now is 14.5%. So to be clear, that rate is what the employer pays and the employee pays. So we match the employee's contribution rate as well. So PSRS holds the contributions for all certified staff. So if you're a certified staff member serving in an instructional position, you pay the 14.5% for retirement, and the district matches that. We have PSRSS. That is a 2/3 contribution rate. And the employees that pay that are employees who are certified from DESI, hold a DESI certificate, but serve in a position that does not require one. So several years ago, we actually had a staff member in this building who held a DESI teaching certificate but served as our custodian. They would have paid this 2/3 rate. And then PERS stands for Public Education Employee Retirement System. And that holds all the contributions for classified employees. So employees that don't hold a DESI certificate and are serving in non-instructional positions. So we've got that FY '25, the current-year estimated employer-only match is $29.3 million for retirement. So in the current year, the school district has 10 bargaining unit agreements. One with Teamsters that represents the bus drivers and bus aides, and then nine with Springfield National Education Association. So negotiations with the bargaining unit begins usually no later than February 1st and ends by June 1st or May 31st. Recommendations will be presented at the June board meeting. So moving on to purchased services and supplies, this represents 20.5% of our total operating budget. I've got those broken down into categories for you as well. And then listed next, under each category is the functional area. And examples of expenditures that would come out of those functional areas that support either instruction, support services, or community services. This is a very, very busy chart, but essentially what this does is it takes those same purchased services and supplies and breaks them down even further by functional category, or you can think of it kind of as department. So you can see that the majority of our purchased services and supplies are spent on instruction. And then as you break down, kind of in the middle are some operating or supportive instruction categories. So technology services, business services, facilities, student transportation, student nutrition. General administration are our legal services, elections, Board of Education, superintendent is in that. And then other support services, don't ask me why DESI calls it that, but it's, our communications department and our human resources department is in that as well. So this slide provides the ways in which we report and are transparent about our financial standing throughout the year. So again, every month, we have those treasures reports that come to the board and include several different bits of financial information, from the general budget summary to any budget amendments and transfers that are necessary. We have our investment report, our surplus property report. We have the contracts, agreements, change orders, and bids that come to the board every month as well. We have the budget development process that again kicked off really with the board in December and goes all the way through June with a variety of small group meetings and public presentations. We have both of, both our external and internal audits that are performed. We have state reporting up to DESI through the annual secretary of the board report and any final expenditure reports that are necessary for either state grants or federal grants. And then again, we bring any employee compensation plan changes or salary schedule changes to the board each month as necessary. This slide provides, and the chart at the top provides, the operating fund balance percentage historical and then projected where we think we're going to end for the current year at this moment. So again, that fund balance calculation is simply taking our unrestricted ending fund balance, so the cash that we kind of had on hand at the end of one year, and dividing it by our expenditures. And that's how we come up with that percentage. So you can see, and I've said this, I think, every year, that our kind of normal operating fund balance percentage is around 17 to 18% before we had that influx of federal stimulus dollars related to COVID. That has obviously spiked us up a little bit, and so we are bringing that back down to a more normal, normal level. Strategically trying to do that without committing too many expenditures that revenues aren't able to keep up with is at the forefront of our minds. So we also have in there, the blue line represents the strategic plan that was put into place, and that calls for us to stay at a 17% fund balance, and then board policy calls for 15% fund balance. So those are represented on the chart. And then just at the bottom, kind of a fund balance overview. So what does the fund balance tell us or any school district? And it really is an indicator of these four major categories. So your financial health as a school district, so our ability to meet our obligations, the cash flow requirements that are needed, so kind of what's in our savings account, if you will, when revenues are cyclical or when it all comes in in one big chunk in the year. The ability to make those payrolls and make those obligations so that we don't have to go out and borrow money. It's very important to have a healthy fund balance so you don't have to borrow. Again, contingency, so if big emergencies were to happen, that fund balance serves as kind of a buffer against those unexpected expenditures or if revenue shortfalls were to happen. And then credit rating, so when the school goes out for a loan or a bond issuance, the credit rating is used to assess our creditworthiness. So it's very important to have a healthy fund balance, and that's something that they look at as well. The final slide for the evening is our budget presentation schedule. So we'll have some small group meetings coming up, starting this week. And then we'll have the budget recommendation presentation at the June 10th meeting. And then we'll have that final recommendation at the June 24th meeting where the board will vote on the budget. Feels like I went really fast, but are there any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Stasell. Comments from the board?
I have two quick, two brief questions, and you may not know the answer off the top of your head. I'd be surprised if you did. Back on slide nine, where the district is providing life insurance to all eligible employees and long-term disability for all employees, do you know what the cost to the district is for those two items?
Yeah, so if you go back up one more slide, it'll have the revised, let's see if I can go back. There we go. Well, it's all lumped together. So I actually don't have that in front of me tonight. But it's all part of that employee insurance. So I can get that for you, the breakdown.
Okay. And then do you know the reasoning behind why we're paying 100% of health insurance and only 71% of dental insurance? Just curious.
Yeah, so our dental insurance, it really historically has been about 50/50. When I came here a long time ago, we didn't, I don't think, paid anything on it. So we started gradually paying a portion of that. I don't have a great answer for you as to why it's not 100%, but, yep.
Other board members, comments, questions?
I have a quick question. I know we in the private sector have seen our benefits cost increase pretty significantly the last couple of years. Have we seen that here, or like, is the benefit expense kind of been stable the last few years? Because I mean, 100% health insurance is a great benefit for our employees.
It's a great benefit, and it's also fairly unheard of anymore, right? So most entities have employees kicking in at least some portion of that. And we have seen an increase, a pretty significant increase in the cost of our claims. But for several years here, we kept the board-paid portion fairly flat. And then we've been really strategic over the last few years about increasing that slightly to keep up and keep, we're self-funded. We have run a self-funded health insurance program. So to keep that fiscally sound and sustainable, we've had to put into place some increases to keep up with the cost of the benefits.
Other comments? Board Member Mohammed Khani?
Thank you, Kara. I, these presentations improve every year.
Thank you.
And I'm learning more every year. So I have a couple of questions. I think, I'm pretty sure I've asked this, but I've, so if you have, so counselors and principals, they are support. So they might be certified, but they're coming out of the General Fund and not the Teachers. They, even though they're in a, so when you said "and," it was an "or."
So is, is your job instructionally related? That's the first question. If the answer is yes...
So would a counselor be instructionally related?
Yes.
So it's not under support services? You see where I'm going?
I do. So the, the general, the Teachers Fund is Fund 20.
Right.
Okay, so we're thumbs up on that because it's instructional and they have a DESI certificate. Now, the function that they're coded to is not direct instruction, which is a Function 1,000. They're in the 2,000 range, which is support of instruction. So...
But it's still...
The Teachers Fund doesn't dictate whether it's instruction or not. It's instructionally related.
Okay.
And then the function dictates whether it's really direct instruction and tied to the, more of the classroom or not.
So...
There's a flow chart I can provide you.
The who?
The Teachers Fund is, are you certified in serving in an instructionally-related position?
Okay.
And then Fund 10 is, I'm not, I'm not DESI certified at all. So if you don't hold a DESI certificate and you're not in an instruction-related position, you're Fund 10, or General Fund.
Okay.
So that would be the smaller, smaller portion of our staffing.
Okay, so pretty much in the support services, counselors, librarians, speech language, pathologists, principals would be Teacher Fund, nurses?
Correct. Not Teacher Fund. They don't require, yeah.
Bus drivers, custodians, school police, maintenance staff, clerical, those are all General Fund.
Correct.
And now if any of those individuals hold a certificate, they'd be in the PSRS-dash-S.
Correct.
Whereas all those other people are all in PSRS regardless of their teacher or not. They hold a certificate, and they could be a counselor or, and speech therapists also, where would that be? I don't know. It doesn't, it's okay. I think I finally got this. Oh, my gosh. I've asked this every year. Don't hold me to it. It might happen again next year. All right. Then I have one question on slide 12. Can you, okay, so under supplies, this early childhood, like I was a couple of years into my board service when I realized it's not part of K-12, right? This is not part of our funding. This is a whole different...
PK, early childhood.
Early childhood. It's a whole different basket that the money comes from and all that jazz. So under community services supplies, can you go through those? So under community services supplies, can you go through those three? There's early childhood, so that would be, all the supplies for early childhood would be considered out of that pot?
Yeah.
So it's not instructional related, it's support?
So, I'm sorry, no, the, let's see, the early childhood, the function for that is like a 35/11. So yeah, it's not direct classroom instruction for K-12. So yes, it would be.
That's why, because it's not part of K-12.
Yeah.
And then it has food. That's why it's under community service, because it's not a community service.
So food for like parental involvement events and that kind of thing that would be covered under Title I dollars. So if we're purchasing food for some sort of community service event, mainly parental involvement kind of.
Like let's say you have coffee and cookies for some event, that would fall under that. And then that would also be parental involvement supplies. Okay. So early childhood, because it's not in K-12, it gets housed under community services?
Yeah, so I, and I don't want to misspeak.
You know, because community services has a different.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean districts are required to provide early childhood special education services, but just early childhood programming in and of itself, I don't think that districts are required to necessarily do that. So it's more of a community service.
That's why it falls under community service. Okay. And the food is the food for the early childhood or is that?
It could be food for early childhood. It could be food for parental involvement. Anything that would fall in that community service bucket. Yeah. So you're pretty much going to see food in, could be in every category, right? Probably not direct instruction, but support services and community services for sure.
Say that again?
The food, so food to serve our K-12 students is going to be support services and then food for early childhood or parental involvement would be.
Comes under community. Okay.
Thank you. Other comments, questions?
Thank you.
Item 5.02, student success update, governing priority one, end of year universal screening update, screener update, and annual performance report 2024. Dr. Nicole Holt will join us at the podium to provide information to the board.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm going to ask for a brief moment to gather our friends who will be joining us. So take a second. If you're here for our presentation and want to come on up, that'd be great.
All right. Thank you, Board of Education, for the opportunity to be here tonight and showcase some end of year updates around the academic work for the organization. Before we dive into some of the parts tonight, I just want to remind everyone where the work situates. So obviously the strategic plan is something that is near and dear to the hearts of those that are sitting here. But just a reminder to those strategic plan priorities. And this is a commitment to updating you on what occurs specifically in the priority of success for the students. Dr. Lathan, as well as the executive leadership team goals live on the screen. And so much of the conversations that we'll have tonight are really about Goal 1 and 2, living in the space of obviously our work towards mastery in our academic areas. But we are also going to provide a little update tonight to where we are with relationship to creating positive classroom environments, specifically to our implementation of PBIS. So here is how we will spend our brief time together. We will live in the space of data, specific to some updates around the professional learning needs assessment, which you know is an annual needs assessment that we provide each year to get really robust feedback related to the professional learning that we're providing to our certified educators across the system. We'll also talk a little bit about some more recent data that we just received related to our implementation of PBIS. We will also take just a few reminders relative to just other types of assessment in the system, which is what leads us to the people that you see here in front of us, which will be the opportunity to talk about how the use of assessment is making its way down into the classroom in really exciting ways, both for academic teams, which is a new addition tonight, but also to each of our schools. Then we will close with just some updates to the board around as we project forward into next year, what are we working through and what are we planning for related to future work? So that's how we'll spend the time. So we'll start with some data. You are familiar that we give an annual needs assessment survey each year to our certified staff members. What you see on the screen is really, over time, our participation rate in that particular survey. So we saw a 41% increase from the 20, from the 23 to the 24 needs assessment. And we are maintaining that percentage when we think about what came in this year for the 25 needs assessment. It was just a slight decrease this year, but we're really pleased with maintaining that high standard of getting lots of information from lots of people in the system about professional learning. So what lives here really is some updates to professional learning plan metrics. So when you think about what our certified staff are saying related to professional learning, we are trending very high over time with the percentage of teachers who say, I understand that professional learning is a component for increasing student achievement in my classroom. Additionally, we see that they are saying that has increased as a result of them implementing what we are providing at the district level. So that has been something that we've been really intentional around in our academic teams is to ensure that what we're providing when we gather people together for district learning is making a difference in what they're doing in their classrooms. So we're pleased with our 2% increase from last year to this year with relationship to that metric. I'll draw your attention. This slide specifically speaks to not only professional learning at the site, which would be what's delivered on the campus to our teachers, but also what we see with relationship to district professional learning. So we're maintaining our 90% or higher related to what their, what teachers are getting when they're on their specific site receiving professional learning. And we're pleased with an increase related to district level professional learning as well, that that is really equipping them to tackle some of the initiatives that we've set forth in the strategic plan. Again, staying in the space of site professional learning and district professional learning, this is the percentage of educators who are in agreement that our professional learning is being differentiated. So if you'll recall, in, in prior years, this has been a little bit of a pain point for us where we maybe aren't getting quite to the degree that implements them in their role. And so we've been really intentional, especially at the district level, to make sure that we are giving professional learning that speaks to their unique role in the system. So we're very excited about the results we see there at the district level and happy that we're still seeing an increase when we think about what our principals are delivering or our academic teams are delivering on campuses. Getting feedback specific to our implementation of professional learning communities has been a priority in our system over the last several years. So what you see on the screen are the four PLC questions. What do we want students to learn? How do we know that they've learned it? How will we respond when they don't? And what are we going to do to extend learning above those students who are proficient? And so what you'll notice is we are still spending a lot of time talking about what we want students to learn, which is good. That's what we want our teachers spending time doing when they're in our PLTs. But you will notice that we are shifting percentages up in questions two and three, which means that we're beginning to show more mastery in what we want students to learn. But we're also moving to the use of data to help us understand what they don't know and then what we're going to do when they don't know it. So we would expect that to continue to shift upward. And obviously, we would like to see higher percentages in the extension we're providing to our students that are already mastering content. The next slide really represents teachers' perceptions of professional learning. So the first question is relative to, do we believe it's essential to raising student achievement? So we continue to have high implementation with relationship to that question. The professional learning I receive has an impact on student achievement. So I'll come back to that one in just a minute. You see a slight decrease from last year, but really maintaining that standard, which is we hope that these percentages will live above 85%. So we're still there. Professional learning, professional learning collaborative teams are effective. So what we're doing in our collaborative time is effective and you see a pretty significant increase there. We have tackled the implementation of professional learning communities, what I would consider to be aggressively. We've said, this is the structure in which we have conversations about student data and we make determinations about what to do next for our students. So our teams and campuses are seeing the value of that collaborative time. I expect the shift to seeing the impact on student achievement to follow that. Because right now, we may not see it as quickly as we would want to when we, when we think about summative assessment. But we are seeing high value in our teachers in the time that they are spending in professional learning communities, which we believe is a precursor to them having more belief that it's impacting what they do for students. What you see here is questions relative to the effectiveness of a PLC. So when they are spending time in that, what do they see occurring? So we are really pleased with high percentages in the 90s. And what you saw on the slide before, I think, speaks to our highest, which is 94%, monitors student learning through ongoing formative assessment. So we, our teachers know that we have the big game moments where summative assessments are happening. MAP, EOC, some of our Galileo pieces. But what our teachers are spending more time talking about is the assessments that are, that occur between those windows, right? My opportunity to teach, reteach and provide intervention. And so that speaks, I think, to the collaborative time and the data you saw on the slide before about them seeing the value of being in a collaborative PLC on an ongoing basis. So just a little bit of information to prime the pump about why you see the people you see in front of you, but also to highlight some really great gains that we're excited about in professional learning. So we're going to shift to another data set, which is really our implementation of PBIS. So we have developed a district PBIS committee, as well as partnered with the Agency of Teaching, Leading and Learning, which is a state partnership. And they have come in to support us with doing school and classroom walks at all of our campuses. And they have lived in the two focus areas that you see on the screen. One is the tiered fidelity inventory walkthrough. And the goal and what's being assessed in that is really school-wide. So when we look at your entire school, how are you implementing on what we would expect to see for tier one implementation of PBIS? So that's one space that we have data in. The other space we have data in is the classroom management observation tool. So this moves beyond school-wide implementation to the classroom level view of tier one implementation. And it's connected to the eight essential teaching and learning practices. Those, so those that came into our district to provide this information spent time in those two tools. So when we think about the tiered fidelity implementation, you're thinking school-wide when you hear that, we're excited to report that all of our schools showed evidence of implementation. That includes early childhood campuses as well. When we look at the data in totality, 50, 56% of schools scored 80% or higher on that tier one implementation school-wide. So again, you heard me mention the who, right? This is our annual review by outside observers. So these are people that don't spend time in our schools on the day-to-day like it would be me walking in or an executive director walking in. What I also will call out is this particular walkthrough form is a prerequisite or part of the process for any of our campuses that want to be acknowledged for the award of excellence. You've seen us in prior years say, this campus was recognized as an exemplar PBIS implementation campus. So this implementation is a part of that application process. And we have currently have eight sites across the district that are in that phase, that are working towards that. When they gave us feedback specific to tiered fidelity implementation, they wanted us to note specifically that the majority of our schools had what we call a matrix in place. So that details how students will behave in certain areas of the campus, that expectations were being taught to students and school-wide reinforcement was in place. If you'll recall, at the beginning of the year, we made a shift that our teachers would be intentionally teaching those expectations in their classroom. So you can see that the result of that is paying off in the data that we are seeing here. Here is that breakdown of the walkthrough by division. So just a little bit of more data to provide you when you think about our elementary, middle and high school campuses. Not only the percent of implementation here, but also the number of schools. The other tool that our friends from the Agency of Teaching, Leading and Learning provided feedback to the district on was the classroom management tool. So now you're shifting from what's happening school-wide to what's happening in individual classrooms on a campus. So again, we're pleased to report that all of our schools showed evidence of implementation. That means that in all the classrooms that these outside observers walked in, they saw evidence of implementation. 60% of our schools, so a little bit higher percentage from our 56 school-wide, showed 80% or higher implementation of those effective teaching and learning practices within the classrooms they observed. Key things that they noted for us were that teacher active practices of active supervision. So I'm continuously up and monitoring what's happening in my classroom. And students having multiple opportunities to respond in the classroom were high points of praise for us in the classrooms that they saw across the district. They also noted that the, some of the structures that teachers were utilizing really well had to do with how they were physically arranging their classroom, that that was in a way that supported student learning and that they had clear routines in place that helped students with not only their behavioral expectations, but also academics. And here are similar graphs, but for classroom management implementation instead of the tiered fidelity. So you see not only for the percentages by division, but also the number of campuses that were implementing 80% or higher. So why all that data upfront, Nicole, and tell me what we're doing with all of that information? Well, that all situates in what shows up for our kids when they get ready to prep an assessment. All of those things matter, how their teacher is receiving professional learning, as well as what we're doing to ensure safe and orderly spaces in classrooms for our kids. So we're going to do a little review on assessment before we dive into spotlight schools. So the board is very familiar with the types of assessments at this point that we give to students. They are both summative and formative in nature. Summitive being our big game moments, formative being practice, the number of times that we're getting to give ongoing feedback to the process. Our spotlight schools today are really going to speak to the formative aspect. So just a reminder, this is the calendar for this current school year on when our students are taking summative assessments. So what you'll note here is we are in the midst of Galileo and MAP as we speak. That's why you're not receiving any academic data right now. Not to mention, we are shifting our universal screener from Galileo to Renaissance. So we will have a much more robust suite to provide you data with on an ongoing basis in the future. However, what we do have is a lot of formative assessment data. So you can see across the quarters, this is when teachers across the system were giving what we call district common assessments, which are those formative checkpoints for the purpose of knowing when to reteach and how to intervene and checking on mastery of standards along the way, not waiting for those big summative moments. You know that we have identified essential standards. Obviously, the state provides what they call priority standards for us, but our district, teachers in our district have committed to identifying what are the essentials that students have to have by grade level in order to move to the next grade level. Those were really selected based on the four categories that you see. And just a reminder that the Edge of Climber system that we're currently using speaks really well with Renaissance. And so what you see there is, in the first graph, is showing how our teachers look at that data from a first teach to a reteach to an intervention, which helps our teachers know what they need to do next. And the bottom graph is just another representation of what that might look like for a teacher whenever they're looking at an entire class. So again, not new information for you, but just want to remind you what sets the stage for what some of our spotlight schools might share tonight. So why spend time on formative assessment? Because what we know is it can double the speed of our student learning. What we know is that our students are coming to us with wider and wider gaps. So if that's the case, we have to adjust what we're doing as teachers and academic teams to help our students in classrooms across the district. And formative assessment really helps us do that quicker and a little more efficiently. You'll recall that one of Dr. Lathan's top 10 priorities for this year was about a shift to our building school improvement plans. We have always had. We have always had building school improvement plans, but the addition this year is that we, we added what we call grade-level school improvement plans and course improvement plans that really give grade-level teams of teachers and content area groups of teachers opportunities to track that formative assessment over time. And those are next to the overarching building school improvement plan. Which leads me to the people that you have seated in front of you. So tonight, we will be featuring the work of teachers and an academic department, and they will really highlight how that collaboration is supporting student achievement data. We have two different elementary schools that are here tonight to also feature how their use of formative assessments is driving and shaping change on their campuses. So I'm going to stop talking for a little bit and give them the floor. So Kim, I'll let you introduce yourself and then introduce the team that you brought with you tonight.
Hi, my name is Kim Redinger, and I serve as the secondary science curriculum coordinator. I want to begin by thanking you for everything you do to support our students to build a bright future for all of our students. I have the privilege to support over a hundred secondary science-
Teachers who guide student scientists to figure things out about the world around them. And I am proud to be joined by four amazing teachers who would like to share a few examples of our secondary science curriculum partnerships. We all have some notes because we don't want to miss anything highlighting from this partnership. Mary-Kate Samonyak is a science teacher, science department head at Reed Academy, and a sixth-grade science curriculum writer, and she's going to share about her experience as a model classroom teacher.
Awesome, thank you. So Model Classroom is a powerful professional learning experience where educators put on their student hat and engage with our curriculum. They observe from colleagues who bring the curriculum to life in their own unique teaching style, which sparks rich conversation around instructional strategies like student engagement, questioning, spiraling, RTI, and elaboration. Together, teachers break down standards, participate in labs, follow instructional practices, review curriculum guides, and collaboratively plan future lessons. During one of our sixth-grade Model Classroom sessions, we implemented the seven, implemented the seven-step strategies of deconstructing a learning target to understand key vocabulary terms like latitude, elevation, and topography. We utilize Kegan-away partners techniques to facilitate discussions, which promotes high active student engagement. Additionally, we conducted a gallery walk to showcase our topography models and allows for peers to give feedback and see each other's learning. The impact of Model Classroom directly extends to students. They benefit from teachers who are better trained, more collaborative, and deeply familiar with the curriculum. They're taught by educators that demonstrate lifelong learning and show greater empathy, having recently experienced what it's like to be in their shoes. As a Model Classroom teacher myself, I found it a meaningful growth opportunity as I was able to receive personal feedback and explanations of what we can do better, which strengthened my own practice and understanding of our curriculum. This experience builds stronger professional learning communities across our district where teachers lift each other up through shared learning. Most importantly, it builds a community where teachers no longer feel isolated from one another. They walk away from the experience with new tools, fresh ideas, and trust in colleagues where they can lean on throughout the school year. It's a true investment in teacher growth and in turn, success for our students.
Thank you, Mary-Kate. Curriculum academies are held after school, and they support the writing and implementation of our guaranteed and viable curriculum. Teams of teachers collaborate to unpack standards and organize those standards into units of instructions that support student sense-making. Our ninth-grade integrated science curriculum academies were held quarterly this year to launch each unit of our new integrated science class. Megan Ely is a science teacher at Kickaboo High School and an integrated science curriculum writer. She and her colleague Ryan Hostetler planned and led these curriculum academies. Megan would like to share a little bit about the impact of this professional learning on teachers and students.
Good afternoon. When we first set out on writing this new curriculum, we gathered feedback from science teachers across the district and asked, what would you want your freshman students to leave this class knowing? Almost every single answer that we received centered around skills that they wanted their students to have. They said that they wanted students to be able to read, create, and analyze graphs, engage in scientific argumentation, and support the claims they're making using evidence, plan and conduct investigations, be able to collaborate with others and follow instructions, and encourage that attitude of curiosity about our world. These goals were our driving force in creating the curriculum, and I have seen a lot of these skills develop over the past year in my students. Because of these key goals, I believe integrated science has the potential to create students who are better prepared for life after high school. The students are learning the process of taking in basic information, but then applying it to real-world problems and creating solutions. For example, we developed or designed a more reliable electric grid for Springfield, and we've also applied the idea of electrostatic force to filtration methods in different masks. The course has the potential to teach more skills that students can use, no matter what they choose to do after graduating. They're learning how to model, how to break a problem down into smaller parts, how to ask questions about things they don't understand, evaluate solutions, and most importantly, how to collaborate with a team. I look forward to seeing students grow in not only their knowledge of science, but their knowledge of how to tackle problems and make sense of the world around them. Getting to work on this curriculum with other integrated science teachers has shown me that we are truly never-ending learning, and that we really do have the ability to foster a sense of curiosity of science for our students. Not only have students grown in their abilities to ask why and look for better solutions, but the teachers engaging in our curriculum academies have, have as well. During our quarterly Model Classrooms, Ryan and I led other integrated science teachers through the entirety of each unit. We broke down each lesson by main ideas, activities, and addressed challenges we faced during our pilot. And trust me, there were a lot. When we were discussing our challenges, other teachers from across the district had ideas on how to solve them. We talked about everything from instructional strategies, classroom management techniques, to connections in other classes that we could use to pull students in. Each time we met, our curriculum improved, not only for our students, but also in the confidence in each of our teachers and their ability to lead students through this class. And just like the scientific process, we are learning more and more each day, improving our methods and revising our solutions to fit what is best for our teachers and our students.
Thanks, Megan. Linda Patton is an integrated science teacher at Glendale High School and an integrated science curriculum writer. She's attended all of these curriculum academies and would like to share a little bit about the impact for her students.
Thank you, hello. Students really seem to enjoy the new integrated science curriculum, and they've been more engaged throughout the year, especially with the hands-on learning activities. While every unit has a different goal, the concepts build well on each other, and students must pull knowledge from one unit to the next. This curriculum gives students more autonomy to take responsibility for their own learning, encourages them to question and grow as a team, as well as with the teacher, allows them to feel safe to take the risks that result in deeper understanding of concepts and learning processes that they will need as they grow. Giving students the opportunity to respond to the curriculum and take responsibility for their learning has resulted in higher learning answers, higher, excuse me, higher level answers to critical thinking questions. My favorite thing about this curriculum is that all students work with the same material to learn the same concepts while allowing the teacher to scaffold and extend learning to every student. This means that students with learning needs from special education all the way through gifted can learn together while working at a level that provides success and challenges for everyone. I'm looking forward to seeing continued growth as our students move forward into high school. And thank you for letting me share and for your continued support for our students.
Thank you, Linda. Starting this fall, twenty-five, middle school science will transition from an earth-life physical sequence to an integrated sequence for all grade levels. This will continue the cohesive learning progression from K-5 science all the way to ninth-grade science to spiral connections between the science disciplines. During our January Teach Forward, I shared the rollout plan with teachers, building, and district leaders, and the feedback has been extremely positive. We will continue to use the curriculum academy model to support teachers as they implement this new curriculum. Hannah Oliver is a science teacher at Cherokee Middle School and an eighth-grade science curriculum writer, and she's going to share about middle school integrated science.
Hello, I'm Hannah Oliver. I've been teaching eighth-grade science in SPS for the past six years. And one, I'm excited to see a few familiar faces from my time spent at Missouri State, but then also excited to share a little bit about the integrated science curriculum with you all. As a team, we are truly proud of the work that this is heading. Science curriculum is teacher-friendly, aligned to Missouri learning standards, and develops high-level thinking for our students across all three grade levels. In our classrooms, students are truly doing the work of scientists. They are investigating, they are identifying errors, suggesting improvements, they are writing scientific claims, they are analyzing data, finding patterns, and most importantly, they are learning to explain why those patterns exist using the evidence and reasoning from their learning. One of our key goals is to, to build a deeper understanding of scientific concepts by revisiting them throughout sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. One of these themes is energy. In sixth grade, students will discover how energy affects matter through Earth's phenomena like weather and plate tectonics. Seventh grade, students will explore how energy flows through space and moves through an ecosystem, through processes like cellular respiration and photosynthesis. And then by eighth grade, students will be investigating potential and kinetic energy, connecting their learning to real-life scenarios like motion and collisions. Overall, this progression allows students to engage with this theme by increasing their complexity, scaffolding their learning across those grade levels, and expanding their understanding over time. Alongside student-learning, teacher collaboration plays a key role in this work. Our PLTs are working across grade level to ensure consistency and support for students by sharing instructional strategies and best practices. And overall, we are excited for the potential of this work, not only for what it means for students, but also how it is strengthening collaboration among our educators.
Thank you, Hannah. And I would like to close just by highlighting a little bit about biology. We have teachers from all six high schools who are represented on our biology curriculum teams, and they exhibit this professional collaboration that you have seen tonight. We have a feedback form on our curriculum guides, and we have over seventy-five responses from teachers all across the school district who want to contribute to the development of the curriculum. And in this spring, I asked all of our curriculum writing teams to share what they wanted to celebrate from the work during this curriculum writing phase, and every single team highlighted the professional collaboration across the district as key to the work. And so I am privileged to work with these teachers, building, district leaders, who are focused on the success of our students, and I thank you for this opportunity to share this partnership.
Thank you so much. I know people want to clap, I like it. Okay, next up is our friends from York Elementary, as well as Callie Baldwin's here with us from the math curriculum coordinator piece. I already apologize to Chandra that her name is not on the slide, and we don't have a name tag for her. But Chandra, if you want to introduce your team and then share how this work has supported you all.
Thank you for having us. We're very excited to share about our professional learning and our growth this year.
Yep.
About our growth this year, I have, I am Chandra Fetter, I'm the principal of York Elementary. We also have Aubrey King here, who teaches fourth grade. Sally Roost is our math interventionist. And then Callie Baldwin is the district's elementary numeracy coordinator, who we've been working with throughout the year. So we have, we're going to start with the reason why. We have focused our professional learning in our fourth and fifth-grade PLTs on inquiry-based math this year. And our reason why is to better meet the needs of our students. Our building has a high mobility rate, so we have seen gaps in math concepts. We also wanted to better understand inquiry-based math as educators, and we wanted higher levels of student engagement in our classroom, as well as increased levels of student ownership in mathematics. Now on to our how. We started when I first met with Callie and York's ED Cindy Webster. We discussed our why and our outcome goals for this learning. We brainstormed next steps, which we decided on starting with intentional planning with our classroom teachers. Then we went ahead and included our teachers at our next meeting, and we met during our PLT meeting for our fourth and fifth-grade teachers. In the first week, we started talking about unit planning for standards mastery. The second week, we went on to our daily lesson planning. And then our third week, Callie jumped into one of our classrooms, and it was Aubrey's classroom. She jumped in and observed and just watched how our teacher, our teacher taught her lesson, and then also how the students interacted with that lesson and with the teacher. Immediately following, we had a feedback conversation, and she jotted down some notes she shared with me, and then some feedback she had. From that meeting, we then went on to week four, where we decided to pull the fourth and fifth-grade teachers back together with myself and with Callie. And we came up with a plan, a lesson plan, and Callie was gracious enough to come in to Ms. King's room, and she modeled a lesson that we had planned together. We debriefed after that lesson, and what we observed was very high student engagement, which was one of our goals at the beginning, our high levels of student discourse. We also learned new strategies with inquiry-based math, instructional agility by pivoting in the moment, and skills mastery with higher-level skills. I'm going to hand it off to Aubrey now, and she's going to talk about classroom as a whole, the shifts in learning, and then Sally will speak about interventions and co-teaching with fourth and fifth grade. Callie will talk about partnering with various schools in the district, and then I will conclude with our growth at York.
Hi. Working with Callie and Ms. Roost has helped my classroom. They have learned how to have an expectation of routines. They know exactly what is expected of them from myself and from the math interventionist. They've learned how to use vocabulary, math, sorry, math vocabulary at a higher level. They've also learned how to collaborate together so that they can work together, and then they can also work things out on their own. Callie helped in this because she came in and she modeled a lesson. And whenever she was modeling that lesson, the students were really engaged, they were really excited to have somebody new in there. I noticed that she had pre-planned the lesson, so she was well-prepared. And she was very, very good at giving student feedback in the moment. And from that, I learned to call on student, like, students that had the answers instead of calling on students who, just randomly, and then we were in a conversation that was unnecessary. So that saves a lot of time, and that also helps the students understand and learn from each other. And then we also learned to use the assignment that was prepared for the end to determine which lesson was critical from each part of the curriculum, because we can't get to all of it. So Callie helped with that a lot, and then having the math interventionist in our classroom has helped the students be well-prepared for the fifth grade.
Hi. Normally, as an interventionist, I pull sets of students that are struggling in certain areas. This time, with being in Ms. King's room, we're basically co-teaching during the whole group lesson, which was really great. And watching Callie helped both of us learn new techniques, new things that could help us improve and help the students learn better. We also do rotations and groups, and so I not only get to be with my, my students, who are the ones for the interventionist, I get to be with all of the kids, and we collaborate together after, especially after DCAs and different things, to see what they need to work on to help them improve better to go forward. It's, it's been great to see the kids. They, they really, they love math now. Some of them didn't, they do. They love math, and they are working harder, and the vocabulary is very important all across the board, but with the math vocabulary, it helps them with the understanding, and it helps them to be better prepared. And this curriculum and working with Ms. King and Callie has really made a difference in how I do things with my students as well.
Sorry, try to talk over. There you go.
So I've been lucky enough to partner with three buildings this year closely in a similar fashion to what we have at York. So cycles of observations, modeling, so I'm stepping into their shoes in their classroom with their students and showing them how it can be done. It's extremely rewarding. I think it makes believers out of people who don't understand it, and seeing it happen, it takes kind of the fear away from it. So it's been really beneficial for me as a teacher to grow from this process, and it's been really rewarding to get to partner with teams and see student attainment grow as a result of it, as well as just competence with curriculum.
So while the scores are great, that we have increased our middle-of-the-year Galileo scores, those are wonderful, but more importantly, our teachers, they now have more intentionality with high-level planning and instruction our students. They've met our goals of being highly engaged in math and having ownership of their learning. I've also seen student-driven math exploration, multiple ways to solve problems, and a deeper understanding of math in our students. Myself, I have increased my knowledge of inquiry-based mathematics. I also am able to provide stronger and more effective feedback to the teachers, and my next steps are more clear with the teachers, and they are more effective when giving feedback. They know exactly what to do next, or I just give them some simple ideas just to tweak a lesson a little bit that might help them. Also, you know, next year, we're going to be going to reveal math, and we were in the middle of this process, and I was like, who was, how are our-
middle of this process, and I was like, who was, how are our feelings going to be towards that? So I was a little nervous. But we have jumped right in with the provided training that we have, that we've been given so far with Reveal Math during our PLTs and our PLCs. And during one of our first ones, we had one of our fourth, our fourth, fifth grade teacher. She was very excited, and she said, I feel like we've put all this work into what we've been doing, and it has set such a strong foundation for us as math teachers. It doesn't matter what curriculum we're going to be teaching. This foundation is really going to help us solidify mathematics with our students. So that was a great piece of feedback, and it was an area where I was nervous. But I think with this foundation and the help of Callie, and then our growth mindset of the teachers, we're going to be doing wonderful things in math at York. Thank you once again for your time.
Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, our last spotlight is Field Elementary. So Adam is here as the principal, and I'll give him an opportunity to introduce his team.
Thank you. So first off, I'm just going to take a few just seconds to say how proud and thankful I am of this team. We obviously are much larger than the four of us, but it takes a team to do this great work. And I'm excited for them to get to share a lot of that work, too, because if you don't know, this is my first year as leader in the building, and that is a kind of scary time for buildings, right? And there's always this, like, fear of what is change going to look like. And so I just have to say to you, it has been exciting to see this work. We've really talked through what are our whys and where are our outcomes coming from. And so we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about that, and I'm going to give them some opportunities to share really the great work and celebrations with data that we've seen so far this year, too. So to my left here is Rochelle Surtin. She is our PYP coordinator and learning coach at Field. And then I have Stephanie Kennedy, our fifth grade, one of our fifth grade teachers, and Lauren Blackman, one of our first grade teachers. So thankful for them for being here. We are an IB PYP school, so we are blessed to get to live and work under the IB framework. And so a lot of our work this year has really centered around, we have a very strong POI, so that stands for our program of inquiry. And so all of our grade levels teach six transdisciplinary units throughout the school year. And so a lot of our work lives within that curriculum framework that's provided. And so a lot of our conversations this year was really looking at what is the learning piece that we need to get to? How do we get there in the data collection along the way to know, are we making it? Are we not? What adjustments need to be made in real time? Because as we've talked about, and what Dr. Holt already shared, the summative data is important, but we also know that that timely formative data is where the work really happens, and whenever we can make those adjustments to really see that change happen. So a lot of our time this year, and I'm going to let Rochelle spend a little bit more time here in a few minutes, talking about just the work with our standards. And so we all know that the Missouri Learning Standards guide our work, whether we're a PYP school, traditional school, whatever the framework is, that is still the foundation of everything that we do. And so where we really spent our time this year, too, is digging into where did those standards live within each of our units, doing the backwards planning to really look at what do students need to come out of that unit mastering? And so making sure that we're intentionally stepping that process. And we always think of that analogy as a ladder, and we talk about that a lot in our PLTs. So what is that first step that we need to take? If students master that, what's the next step? And then how do we keep going to the top of that ladder? I would say that data has really been the piece with that. And I think even one of our speakers earlier talked about it. The work that I do is really giving the structure and the process to then give teachers that, that aspect to then know where to go with it, right? Because we have so much data in education. We are data-rich, but it's knowing what to do with it in the right times to be able to then take that and do magical things with it. And so it was exciting today. We didn't really plan it this way. It worked out. It was our TSD day today. We talked about reading success plans, and the entire time as we were working through this, it was exciting to see and hear the conversations, because we changed some processes. We got really clear with what directions we wanted to go and what data we wanted to use. And it was amazing, again, whenever you let educators do the hard work, because they know that work, right? They live it, they breathe it every day. They're the ones that are working with those students consistently. Whenever they have those structures and those pieces in place within that data, it's amazing the work that will happen because of that. And so we're going to share some of that, celebrations with that. But again, really what my focus this year, and Rochelle and I work a lot together, was just really thinking of how do we stay true to our POI, knowing that we've got these great curriculum resources? But then also, what systems and structures do we need in place to, to ensure that we have a clear path forward? And whenever we don't have maybe the pieces lining up the way we want, how do we pivot in the moment to make sure that those next steps are there so that we have the best possible outcomes? So I'm going to turn it over to Rochelle, and she's going to talk a little bit about our work that we've done within our units this year and standards.
Hello. So like Adam said, we have six transdisciplinary themes. So on that slide that you see there, the little blue links at the top, those are the six different transdisciplinary themes. So we do teach all of the Missouri Learning Standards and use the district curriculum resources. It just might look like, it just has a different scope and sequence. So with the new adoption of the Benchmark ELA curriculum this year, what I did with every grade level, K through five, is we sat down, the standards that are on the left, those are all ELA standards that are covered within the Benchmark curriculum. And so we dug through that curriculum and dug through our units of inquiry to see where those standards are going to fit within our units of inquiry. And so that's where they are, they are checked within there. And then the last column represents if it's like a phonics standard or a standard that's covered within small group, that's where it is shown there. So that way, we are still being held accountable for those same standards. It's just kind of in a different scope and sequence. And we do have that for every grade level, K through five. Over the past three years, we've done a similar structure for all content areas. So for science, social studies, and health, same thing. We dug through the Missouri Learning Standards, the district curriculum resources, and aligned those standards within our units. So students, when they're at Field Elementary, they still get all of those Missouri Learning Standards. It just might be in a different pace and scope than at other traditional schools. The goal of a, when you walk into a transdisciplinary classroom, is that you really can't tell what subject type it is. So if you look at a schedule, it's not, science is from nine to nine-thirty, and math is from this, you know, ten to ten-thirty. You walk in and it's, you really can't tell what it is. Math is still kind of hard, and phonics is pretty standalone, but the rest of them, we really, when you walk in, it's just kind of, the kids are working and they're engaged, and that's what's happening. So that's really our goal for that, but we still maintaining that accountability. And this document really heightened teachers' awareness around standards, revisiting them, unpacking them, and making sure, okay, we say it's being covered in this unit, but how are we assessing that? How are we making sure that we are covering this? So it's been, it's been a lot of work, but it's been good, and it's been a lot of learning for the teachers as well. So I will let Stephanie now. She's our, Lauren's going to go. She's our, one of our first grade teachers. So she's going to speak more directly to the structures and strategies that first grade has in place, that they were able to use to see the gains that they have.
So one of the items that you guys have is our first-grade data tracker form. This was something new that we decided to use this year, primarily in PLTs, where we, as a team and other grade-level teams in our building would come, and we would use this data tracker to put in our DCA scores, which we were doing for both ELA and math. We could also use it for just common assessments we were doing in the classroom over a skillset that we wanted to check to see if our kids were mastering that skill or not. We loved this data tracker form, because it made identifying, which is really important, those students that are not meeting proficiency. It made it very clear and easy for us to see those students that were falling, falling in the yellow or red areas. And then it allowed us to have those conversation pieces around, okay, now we know who these students are, but what are we going to do to make sure that they're mastering the standard that they're falling short in? And so that let us have deep, rich conversations around what interventions we wanted to do with those students. And a lot of times, we would utilize either the essential standards interventions that are actually provided by the district, which were super helpful for us, and Bridges interventions with mathematics, which was also helpful for some of those math standards. We would then take those interventions back to the classroom. We would utilize those within about a two-week period, and then come back and re-enter that information in to see if those students that were falling short were now mastering that. And so it just raised awareness on those students that were just not quite meeting those standards. And it also held us accountable, as well as the educators, to make sure that they were getting there. So we saw a lot of growth when we were able to identify those students quickly and then jump in before it was too late and do the assessing that we needed and interventions needed for those students. The other document that you see is just our third-quarter GLEP. This is just some of our scores that we had, and we are very, this is also Galileo scores, and then also some of our DCA data. And we're very proud of our scores that we have. We centered a lot of our learning around setting goals, not just for us as the educators, but also for the students, and letting them be aware that they are part of this, too. It's not just a test, it's to show what they know. The Galileo scores were a lot higher due to that goal-setting, but also, as the first grade team, we would take a lot of time to go through those Galileo scores at the end, and looking and seeing specific test questions that those students were falling short in, and knowing how to jump in and be able to look at those heavily missed questions with the students. So for us, that looked like using the assessment builder within Galileo with our students and making those assessments specific to those questions that were heavily missed. And then also utilizing some of those questions during our number talks for math. It made it very aware to where they could see a standard presented in a lot of different ways. Because sometimes Galileo is really tricky, because the way they present it is not the way that the kids see it all the time in the classroom, and it can be a little bit tricky, specifically in the area of math. If we're looking at the very first one up there, it says, "The understanding of two-digit numbers composed of tens and ones." We noticed very quickly that IM does not use base-ten blocks, and Galileo assesses place-value using base-ten blocks. And so we used that concrete representation of the base-ten blocks with our students and really hit that hard this year. And we saw a crazy amount of growth whenever we were able to really look at those specific questions and present that standard in a way that was different for them. So those are a couple of the things that we did.
And then Stephanie.
So I just wanted to talk about some things that my fifth-grade team, we wanted to highlight. Our team, when we meet for PLTs, it's, we've got the trust there, and we always start with the standards, and we really want to understand them. So we kind of take a look at those. We get the math book out a lot to kind of look at, maybe some examples to use. One thing that my team noticed, giving the pre-test first, the Form A DCAs, taking a look at, like, why, you know, they were so low, they were a pre-test. But I noticed really quickly, the vocabulary was really needing some work. So what we started doing is unpacking, like, breaking down the questions. One of the very first questions on an ELA DCA was, "What conclusions can you draw from this image?" And a lot of my kids were missing that. And then when I was looking at their responses, they were really writing, like, well, I could draw feathers on the costume. I could draw. And it's like, oh, we need to break down the question and help them understand. Even the word conclusions, passing back that one particular pre-test and asking my kids, like, how can we, you know, move forward? What can I do to help you? A lot of them said they forgot what conclusions were, or they didn't even know. So moving forward, my team, we just, we started breaking down the questions, so the students would understand the vocab. Another thing that has really helped my team is we make, like, practice DCAs that mirror what the DCAs look like. So we kind of create our own practice and review based off of, like, the same verbiage and layout of the DCAs. And we have found that that's been very helpful. Also, just kind of using our DCAs in the pre-test and the post-test, Form A and Form B, we've been able to use those test-taking strategies and skills, like, throughout the year, which we're hopeful that they have used that with their math testing and end-of-year Galileo. So those are some of our highlights.
Sorry. So this group is too humble, and I'm going to be their cheerleader for them. But the, the piece that they're leaving out there is that because of this work, we have seen a significant increase in our just levels of proficiency in advanced, and our fifth grade is, every, every class is above seventy percent proficient in advanced currently. And our first grades are all sitting at ninety or higher percent proficient advanced. And I can tell you, that is a huge celebration. That is nothing that I am doing. I can tell you, it is the work that they are doing. And so I just want to celebrate all of that.
So I know this is a little bit lengthy, or part of the presentation. Well, I know some people might call this a dog and pony show. What I'm going to call it is an opportunity for those closest to the work to share with you, as board members, how this plays out in their classrooms every day. And so what I hope you heard was the intention with which these educators and academic team members gather together in a collaborative way to make sure that the learning gets to our kids in a way that is helping them build success. And there are not more opportunities, if there are more opportunities to do this, I would take them every time, because these people work harder than anybody else in the system. And bringing them in front of you is absolutely what I believe should happen, and I'm so excited that they took time out of their days at the end of a very busy day with kids to be here with you tonight. So can we give them one more round of applause, please? And I think, Dr. Lathan, we usually pause here in case any board members have any questions for them before we let them get back to their families.
Any questions or comments from board? Board member Mahan McConney? Thank you all for being here. I really, really appreciate the detail and you guys getting into the weeds, because I think it helps somebody like me, at least, understand it. And when I understand it, I can appreciate it more, and then it helps me make decisions better. So I just really wanted to thank you. And I have just a couple of questions from the science team, because I'm a science geek. So real quick, Ms. Ellie, when you said that you guys have quarterly, I think you said, model classrooms, and teachers come, like, so how many science teachers come?
So it depends on the quarter. We have anywhere from, like, six to probably fifteen on our biggest quarter night.
From various different schools?
Yeah. So like, Linda came to everyone, and it'd be, we usually had at least one representative from every school, every high school. And so it was just teachers who teach integrated, the freshman-integrated science class.
Okay. So that's one question. And then, so here's, here's the kicker. I guess I didn't really understand that we had ninth-grade integrated science. I know that it was in the emails, but it didn't really sink in. So because my understanding was, you know, you got four years. You get to pick biology, chemistry, physics, or sciences, right? And then if you like one, you can take advanced chemistry or advanced, right? Or, or you can do a breadth of them. But now that you have integrated, so students, you know, they can still take all four, they'd have to double up. But this gives them, like, a breadth of, is that, is that the intent? So you get to touch on a lot of things early on?
They really get to see how all of the sciences work together. It's really not, you know, these independent pieces. And then we're hoping to develop that love and that curiosity.
So that they're more curious about it. Because it's, in the beginning, it is a bit rote, and of course, it's not boring, but, but I can see how it can be into boxes. Okay, so two real quick questions. But do we, and I liked how you, Mrs. Oliver, you talked about the, the actual units, and it was just, it flowed really well. But are we still doing, and because you're doing middle school, right? Are we still doing what I would think of as prescribed categories? Like, oh, we're going to do the various organisms, and we've got the animal kingdom, and we're still doing all the?
So Tim can touch on this a little bit, too. It's integrated science for middle school, starting in sixth grade. So then it will build from there. So the sixth graders this year will get integrated science with those connecting units, and then it will build up. But it's, it's finding connections within those traditional units.
Okay. So we're still doing the traditional units, but just connecting them together? And taking it all, it's really six through nine, it sounds like, right? And then taking it all the way up to ninth grade? And then taking it all the way up to ninth grade. And then lastly, so when, when the sixth to 15 teachers come together, you said you're writing curriculum. I assume you're, you're fine tuning the curriculum that we already have, right? Okay, so the curriculum's there and you're just fine tuning it for the future year because you're on the curriculum team?
Yeah, so we piloted it at Kikapu and Studi the year before.
The integrated curriculum?
Yeah, integrated curriculum. And so we got to kind of see all of the units and kind of, you know, find all the little problems. And so then we would meet with the other schools before they taught the unit. So like we met before August to go over our first unit.
So you put the finishing touches on it?
Yeah, and we say, hey, we struggled with this, heads up before you get into it. And they're like, oh, I have all these ideas on how we could do it better.
And then since you're doing it quarterly, you're fine tuning it for the next year?
Yeah.
So now for the ninth grade integrated, and I should know this because I like ask so many questions about books, do we have a book for this? That's why you guys have to be so involved.
Right, so the ninth grade integrated science, we have developed, much like health curriculum, we have our student workbooks. And so those will be professionally printed and the students have that all aligned to the Missouri learning standards.
So you guys have put it together and it gets printed and they get it?
It kind of reminds me of field a little bit because these are themed units. And so we take all of the standards and put them into the themed units and develop our student workbooks.
Like a soft book, like a, like a soft?
Like a three-ring binder.
Three-ring binder. And every kid gets it in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade. And you guys are like, okay.
But sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we have our McGraw-Hill Inspire Science with the write-in textbooks.
With consumable?
Consumable textbook, yes.
So we'll keep that?
Yes.
And then in ninth grade, they get to have their binder that's, that gets better every year, it sounds like. Thank you.
Other board member comments, questions? Dr. Thomas Tate?
Several questions for Nicole, but I'll wait until the group is over. Is that what you want to do? I, like Dr. Mahan McConney, really, really appreciate this presentation. I love, this is my favorite part, one of my favorite parts of being a board member is hearing about student curriculum, student learning and teaching. And you guys are doing a fabulous job. It really, really excites me to hear how important the work that you're doing and how you're integrating it. One of the things that I wanted to bring up was, I think it was Oliver, talking about the integrated curriculum and I, the language that you were using to describe what they were learning with these integrated curriculum allows for such deep learning beyond just the concepts of science, which is often what people focus on, just the concepts. But this allows for the, this learning that's deep enough to cross all of their courses, not just science class. And that's fantastic. I did have a question about the curriculums that you guys are developing. Are they school-specific? Sounds like for field and for the middle schools, that is kind of school specific. I didn't know if there's district-level curriculum and to what degree is it prescribed?
So do you want to go for science?
For science, it's district curriculum. We have math, district.
District. And so when you guys work on those curriculums and standards, like I heard how important it is for collaboration in Cali coming into the classroom, that excites me to hear your modeling of those things. And I think as Aubrey had said, that you were pre-planned and that allowed for you to be very prepared. And I 100% agree with you on that. And that goes along with lesson planning, which I think is very important. But to what degree is that curriculum that you teach prescribed? And how, is there flexibility? Because I've, I've heard concerns from teachers that it doesn't allow for any flexibility and, you know, teachers who have great background in teaching and learning don't want to follow the script.
Are you speaking to our current curriculum or next year?
Uh-oh.
I don't want to waste your time.
I'm talking about current, I'm talking about current.
So current curriculum, I would say there's still plenty of instructional agility, like Aubrey said. It's in the planning piece where teachers need to be thinking about that. So we prioritize what connects to the learning objective. We ensure that we meet that criteria. So really, it goes back to planning. It's not a basil, so it's not a straitjacket. It is the recipe and the teacher is the chef in that kitchen. So your kitchen's different than my kitchen because it needs to be. So I would say it goes back to lesson planning. It's not rigid, it's what your students need. And I think Aubrey might say, as a result of watching me model, I think one of the first things she said was, you asked more questions than it said to. And yeah, I'm not tethered to a curriculum, I'm a teacher. I have expertise. And that's what I think we would encourage everyone to do. Use your expertise, that's your recipe, but it's not the whole story.
And how's that changing next year?
So next year, I'm excited. I would say, next year, there's going to be more teacher choice. So every single lesson will have two modalities for presentation. So teachers who feel we need more hands-on or we need more concrete exposure, there's a lesson that's tailored for that. And then if teachers are saying, my kids don't need as much concrete, we're ready for more abstract, that same lesson has a different way to present it. So I would say there's more choice moving into the next curriculum, which I think again is celebrating the professionalism that our teachers demonstrate and giving them that driver's seat spot of picking what their kids need.
Thank you, that's, that's fantastic. I'm going to ask the question to Nicole because it may also cross the teachers too. So I'm going to go ahead and throw those out there. On one of the slides earlier, you talked about slide number 10, the students who are proficient. And that last category down there and how we were not seeing the same level of connection to professional learning for that group of students. That's a group that I'm really concerned about because I do hear from families about that group of kids. We focus a lot of our attention on the low-performing students, but we have high-performing students in our district and they need to have the same level of challenge and information. So how are we going to get that number higher? And Dr. Lathan knows that's one of the things I talk about often with regards to getting more opportunity for students at the high-end who are proficient, more opportunities. Every kid's not going to get into the gifted program and these, every kid needs the opportunity to be advanced when they are already proficient.
Yeah, so I will let them speak, but what I would say is when, when you look at how this question was framed, it's check those that your teams would say drive your conversation on a weekly basis. So I would expect teachers to check boxes like one, two, or one and three more frequently than they do box four, just simply because that's what gets, like, we spend a lot of time over here.
So I think that's important for you to, when you look at the data, that's important for
you to know that. But the other piece I would say is that we, we are pushing our principals and as we design curriculum at being more intentional, A, principals as facilitators or guiding coalition members as facilitators in the PLC, when they notice that a high percentage of students are already proficient, whether it's a first teach, reteach, or intervention conversation, that they're saying, and what are we doing, right? So getting, helping our principals to make sure that conversation becomes a natural part of the PLC process is definitely something we're more focused on. But I also think the onus lies on us a little bit as we're designing, you know, professional learning. We've come a long way with teachers saying, now, thank you for differentiating that PL to my role, but now that PL needs to continue to be curriculum-based and differentiated by the level of our students. So I would say that is continued work for us, but I'd be curious for campuses to also respond.
I think the part that I would add to that is that's where the excitement around inquiry-based learning comes in. And I think that a lot of times people think of like that last question, what are we doing for our students who are proficient, that they need to be doing something above grade level, right? And I think that's a misconception a lot of times because there are so many great questions that can come out of a grade-level content. But what as educators, we have to do is be able to ask the right questions to then derive those types of responses, as I knock my name tag down, because that's where the work really happens. And I think as educators, that's where that agility comes in, we're the chef part of it. Because we then have to take that where we've got 25% of our students, whatever that number is, that are able to do this, we pose the right question to them. And then how do we then let them maybe take some of that learning and grow with it? And that may just be that teachers just facilitating that learning along the way. It may be they're providing a resource or the next step. But I think that's what's exciting about even the district curriculum resources that are continuing to be, you know, put into our hands, is that that resource is there and that teachers, when they have that and they feel comfortable being able to do that. And I think that part of it too, and there's a misconception too, sometimes with inquiry teaching, is that it, there's, if you're just doing that, you're not doing the direct too. So you've got to have, right, the pendulum's got to be there to do both sides of it because there's importance for all of these questions to be able to meet every kid in a classroom that's very diverse and continuing to be diverse.
Yeah, I often think of it as breadth and depth and the breadth is the part that gives you all the information, but the depth is how much you know about it. And for our kids who are at the proficient end, we can always give them more. Okay, this is another question that I had about PBIS and the seven strategies for effective teaching and learning?
Yes.
How are those connected? Because the question that I have, I want to know how they're connected because it looks like from the data you were presenting, you were talking about PBIS, but then you're saying it's measured by the seven strategies for effective teaching and learning. How are those connected? And the outcome of that, when we have the schools that have the higher 80% implementation, does that equate to better instruction? I heard you kind of say it, but I want to kind of hear you say it again, with behaviors, et cetera, in the classroom, which we know leads to learning, et cetera, so.
So when we think school ride, right, PBS provides us a rubric for, this is what tier one looks like when you're walking a campus, you would expect to see these things in place. The classroom management observation tool speaks to all of those expectations, like those eight things, classroom expectations, classroom procedures and routines, encouraging expected behavior and providing specific feedback to it, discouraging inappropriate behavior, active supervision, opportunities to respond, activity sequence and choice, and task difficulty. So what our observers would say is that activity sequence and choice and task difficulty are really hard to see when they're in the room for such a brief amount of time. So really, they gave us pretty rich feedback on the top six. So though, whenever they go in with their rubric, they're looking for that side of tier-one implementation, which has its own components, but then as they shift to classrooms, they focus more on how these elements are impacting what they see with students relative to engagement. So that's the cohesion.
I like that. Last question is just about what do we do, what's the difference between the schools who are at high implementation versus those who are low implementation? What, what kind of gives there to make them different and what are we doing about the ones that are low implementation?
So what I would say is, we, we didn't tell any of our campuses, like, we're expecting you to be somewhere, right? We wanted this to be baseline data for them and, but we did ask our observers to identify exemplars. So our hope would be with this data that we would be able to group, if you will, our schools to say, your gaps were in encouraging expected behavior and whatever, here's an exemplar that you can see how that's playing out in a campus that looks like yours and give them that support. So that's what we're planning to do with the data. And what else, what I think if the agency of teaching and learning were here, would say, the levels of implementation we have after really only systematically putting this in place for one full year pre-K12 was impressive. And they're hopeful for what that looks like as we move in and are willing to partner with us to help specific schools, groups of schools, and the district in totality.
Thank you. I have no more questions, but I wanted to say kudos to, I think it was Field or York with these numbers of your test scores going up from these like 60% to like 90% for first grade? Kudos to you guys.
Other questions or comments from board?
I have a comment or two. I, I've said this before, but this is one of those presentations where I just, I'm just getting smarter by osmosis. Just breathing your air is making me smarter. So thank you for taking the time to be here and for sharing your expertise. I love the idea of the differentiated professional development. I think it's long overdue. Having sat through a lot of professional development over the years, we are absolutely on the right track with differentiating that based upon staff need. And that goes back to the why. I think when I look at slide number 10, I believe it is, with how people are feeling about their professional learning, I, they know the why. And kids want to know why they need to learn something. Teachers and educators want to know why do we need to learn it as well? And when you can do that sales pitch and get people on board, they're more willing to invest their time and their energy because they can see the results. I would also say in regard to the, how will we extend for students who are proficient? My sense of that, and I'm still out in classrooms quite a bit, not so much in R12 all the time, but in a different capacity. But what I see happening, and teachers may not even know they're doing it, when they're asking those questions at the highest levels of Bloom's taxonomy, as just part of a whole glass, class discussion or a small group, you are extending the learning, although you may not think of it that way because you didn't have a special activity that, that took them in that direction. But the way you, you form your questions and you do the class discussion meets that differentiated need of extending learning, would be my guess. I, I always like to learn new vocabulary terms, it's the reading teacher in me. So I've learned a new one. Well, now, in the past, we had, what was it, instructional agility that I learned here one night. And then tonight, I learned tiered fidelity implementation. That was new to me, so good deal. Thank you, thank you. And Ms. King, you said something that was really interesting, well, you said a lot of things that were interesting, but one really caught my ear because I wasn't exactly sure if you were talking about student behavior or if you were talking about math content. And really, I guess it could go either way, but you said, you, you referred to conversations that were unnecessary. And having spent a lot of time in classrooms myself, I've been involved in a lot of unnecessary conversations, whether it be in the office or whatever. So that, I, again, I don't know if you were talking behavior or math, but it really resonated with me. And then a shout out to Hannah Oliver, one of my former student teachers that has hung in there. And I knew when she was a student at Missouri State, she was going to be a master teacher in no time and just look at her now, so.
So again?
Anything else? Okay.
I know.
Well, okay, well, thank you all so much and let's give them another round of applause. Oh, we're not finished? Well, I know we're not finished.
No, no, we're not finished, we have a couple more slides.
Oh, okay. Nicole.
Thank you.
But they can go home. Nicole has, thank you. Forty slides, we're only, good, thank you for the reminder.
Thank you so much for taking the time off.
We're planning now.
Yep. Okay, I'm going to keep it moving.
Yeah.
That was a sign-off. Got it. Okay, so the last little section here is just talking to you specifically about the current work related to what you heard and then future work that we have as we move into the summer. So just a little shout out here, and I already had a little celebration with my team on Monday, but when I think about effective supervision, what we know is what we're seeing in classrooms in large part and mainly comes from the educators that live in those spaces each and every day and the principals that are on those campuses. But I can't help but bridge the connection between the structure that has been implemented with relationship to supervision, with executive directors and directors of schools, and the in-time, consistent in-time support that they are providing across the year. So this is our current number, and I know they're going to be mad at me because the number is actually higher today than it was on Friday when I pulled the data, but 1,548 site visits, this, what they've completed as a team so far this year, that equates to just a little over 2,700 classrooms that they have stepped their foot in and provided support into, whether that be through leader coaching or teacher coaching. Our spend on campuses is how that breaks down. And I'm really, really proud that when they are on campus, they categorize how they spend their time. And 504 times, they have been engaged in conversations around providing our teachers quality observation and feedback to drive what's occurring in the classroom for our students. So I think powerful data to just show how we're holding people accountable for the work that you see happening across campuses. Here is just an outline of the professional learning that is going to be provided as we walk into the 25, 26 school year. So we got rave reviews on giving teachers the opportunity for a little trade-out time in the summer, when you think about what they're going to need curricularly. So what we heard over and over again from teachers is, give me the curriculum updates and information earlier in the summer so I can have time to process that. So when I get to my back-to-school days, I can deal with all the other things that need to occur at the start of a school year. So we're happy to offer those trade-outs again, as well as over 25 different topics or book studies. So as we've looked at the professional needs assessment surveys annually, that gives us ideas about what topics might be of high interest to our teachers across the system and then our professional learning team, as well as some of our principal work teams, to help draft some of this learning and what it could look like for people who want to engage across the summer. We are intentional about the support we provide to either our comprehensive and focused schools and we're excited to partner with really a guru in the solution treehouse in Bill Fetterer. He's been with us before, but he's coming back to do a two-day coaching piece with those schools in particular in the month of July to really help them deeply develop their PLC systems on their campus and their response to intervention pieces or RTI on those campuses. You heard already a little bit about model classroom. You'll notice the live element that lives here. You heard the team talk about how that learning is happening after school. So what that looks like is a simulation without students. So what we've heard- So what we've heard is, but show me how to do it with the kids in seats. So we are going to be engaging in some Model Classroom Live is what we're calling it. And you'll hear a little bit more detail about that in another slide, which I think is really going to show, you can also take that learning and see how it's happening with students in the space. Of course, we'll do our Teach Forward days, and those will be across the school year as they typically are. And then we obviously are doing job embedded professional learning that occurs both in PLT through coaching and then through the monthly learning that we provide to our leaders. I mentioned Teach Forward already, but you can, again, I highlight that optional trade-out that our teachers are really excited about. We also heard a very intense cry for choice. So Ms. Bruner mentioned it just a little bit ago. We are proud to say that the November Teach Forward session will be all choice. So our educators will have the option to choose sessions that day at their own will and get what they want to support the learning that they're doing on their campuses. And then in January and March, we will have some additional support to back up what they already got in summer and August. Here is the detailed information about Model Classroom Live. So what that structure will look like is a pre-observation. So those who are coming to view a period or a time in the elementary day will have some pre-observation meetings so that they understand what they're looking for when they go into that space. Then they get to see it live with kids, and then they are offered the opportunity for a post-observation where they can say to the teacher, why did you do what you did? Or we saw this with this group of students. How did you know? How did that impact what was happening for students? So that powerful piece of hearing from the teacher that was in the space doing the teaching and helping refine what they might do when they go back to their own classrooms. And it gives them an opportunity to do collaborative planning outside of their own campus. So we're really excited about this opportunity that we're going to be able to extend to our educators in the coming year. You heard me mention comprehensive and focused school supports. Again, that opportunity to be with Bill Fariter, but we also wanted to highlight some more strategic intensive coaching opportunities that we're providing to the nine campuses you see there. They are going to get quarterly coaching from some of our peers at Solution Tree about how you improve student learning even deeper in the PLC process. So in addition to the two days in the summer, those campuses will have quarterly check-ins to help elevate that coaching capacity on their campus. Here are some brief outlines of the learning we'll provide to our leaders so that they can support teachers across our system. So our leaders continue to say, the more intimately I can understand what curriculum looks like being implemented in the classrooms, the better I can give feedback to teachers about next steps for students. So that is going to be a priority when we think about Curriculum Academy that we do every year. We continue to prioritize learning for our leaders around special education, not only what's trending, right, but how we ensure compliance across our campuses and clarifying whose responsibility is what. So when you think about the leader, you think about the PC, you think about the special educator on the campus, really getting clear about who's doing what and when to ensure that we can remain in compliant as we provide services to our special education learners. We continue to work on PBIS implementation, and classroom-wide supports will be a place that we will focus in the coming year. That's also about how we develop the culture or PBIS teams on our campus to use data just like we do with academics to support what we're doing with student behavior on our campuses. And again, we'll continue to engage in monthly learning with our principals around some of the topics that you see there, none of which are probably a surprise to you because I've said each of them maybe six or seven times thus far in this presentation. So a piece that is a result of direct feedback that Dr. Lathan and myself and Dr. Majors heard as we've engaged in Superintendent Solutions is, how do I, as a parent or a stakeholder or a guardian, really know, right, what the curriculum looks like as it's occurring in classrooms? How can I develop rich knowledge around that so I can support my students or students in my life? And so we developed some monthly curriculum toolkits that will mirror, think about the reading toolkits that we've sent out monthly this year under the Read to Succeed initiative. They're very similar to that, but they're grade-specific or content-specific, and they are aligned to the curriculum. So we are also going to be working specifically with our Title I sites in the coming year to offer family curriculum nights where parents can come in, engage with the curriculum, and see how that's going to support them as they engage with their students around learning in classrooms across the district. So we're super excited about this opportunity. More to come on that. And then I'll close just with Superintendent Solutions. We get really rich feedback from those that engage in the Superintendent Solution process, whether that's our parents, our principals, our assistant principals, which was an addition this year, as well as our teachers. We are definitely, and I think Dr. Lathan would concur, past the point where people are saying the things in those meetings that they think we want to hear, right? So we are getting strategic and really quality feedback. And what comes out of that, you see in this presentation, but you're also going to see in some key developments that we heard this year. So elementary teachers have been basically beating down our door, saying, I need more planned time around backwards design for lesson planning across the system. Our counterparts in secondary have much more either planned time or dedicated professional learning time in their contractual day than our elementary peers do. So we are agreeing to offer, pending the board budget approval, three additional half-days that we can dedicate to our elementary teachers to do that work that they're saying they want to be doing. And so we're excited about that. We're working on a structure for that so that we don't leave classrooms without teachers and that we can do that in a way that allows them the time to do the hard work of designing lessons and supporting student growth. We also had very rich dialogue around not only scope and sequence, but some shifts that might need to occur for the student handbook. And so we are in process in revising that, both to clarify understanding, because we heard a lot of confusion between principals, teachers, and parents about interpretations of things, and how we can clear that up to make sure that there's better understanding for all. And then, of course, this was our first year to implement alternative methods of instruction, which, again, I'm sorry, I had some spelling errors there. But we've asked for process improvements from those that experienced it, both our Superintendent Solutions group as well as our curriculum folks. And so we're working to refine that process as it will be something that we are able to do in future years. That was a lot of information. Thanks for the extra time to engage with our teachers and staff members. Questions? Comments? For me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hold that thought. Board Member Kincaid does have a few questions.
Board Member Mahamad Khani does too. Not the only one. How exciting about the toolkit and the family curriculum night. I'm very excited to hear that. I would encourage the district to continue to brainstorm if guardians and parents are unable to make it at night due to work complications, if there's other options for them to engage. How are we getting that information out to our adults?
It's coming.
Okay, okay. Stay tuned. And are we offering childcare?
I don't know that we have engaged in that deep level of planning yet.
We can, I mean, we've done it before.
We have.
We do.
Sure.
Sure.
We want this actually to be held at the various school sites. And so those are options that when our schools have their different family nights, so that we can incorporate that. Because we want people to come out. But once again, it came as a result of Superintendent Solutions with parents, saying we wanted this resource, so.
Great, great. Two other questions. Back on slide 16. You had given us some feedback about areas that the schools are doing well in actors' supervision and opportunities to respond and physical arrangements and routines. Were you provided any feedback on areas for improvement?
Yep. So they talked a little bit about confusion for some campuses as we work through the tier-one components. So further enhancing clarity of understanding for all campuses or specific campuses. Some things were misleading. That was dependent on newer leadership coming in and the prior regime doing something a little bit different. So they saw that in some cases. They talked a little bit about incentives. So you saw, you know, there was one piece around, are we reinforcing that positive behavior when we see it? And so what are those structures and systems? So that was an opportunity that they noted for some district growth. And then really, it was about the building, culture, and climate teams. How do we enhance those teams' abilities to analyze data the way that we are analyzing academic data in order to really have the full scope? So we've kind of, the PLC process for academics is up and rolling, but you can use that same format with relationships to student behavior. So how are we empowering those teams to analyze data in that way and provide recommendations for next steps?
I'll be interested to see what that looks like six months, a year from now.
Yep.
And then finally, you started your presentation with what appeared to be a survey of teachers in our district. Can you tell me about that survey? When was it given? Was everybody asked to participate? Was everybody required to participate, et cetera?
No, not required participation. It never is, right? But we usually do it, did we do it in the month, Martha's here, the month of March? The entire month of March, right? Teachers were given the opportunity to engage with the survey that we provided. So we sent that out various ways, both by campus and then through links that they could access. And we left it open an entire month, which was something different than we had done in the past. So this is very new data. This is very new data. Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Mahad McConney?
Okay.
I have mostly comments and some rapid-fire questions. I'm going to go in the order. So I'm one of those board members that was very critical of professional development. And wow. So let me just quickly hit these. So the most important number, the one that really matters, was participation of teachers. And there's such a big difference between 2021 and now. And I think that's, that's where the proof is in the pudding. We hit that, and then everything else comes on top of it. So it just makes the rest of the data meaningful, right? You can look at those numbers, and it means something. And I know this is already mentioned, but I've got to hit, I've got to hit it again. The other benchmark that's key that you guys hit is the differentiated professional development. That's super-duper important. And I had that written down before you mentioned it. And I'm not an educator. But I mean, it's just common sense, so it makes sense to me. I'm really impressed that y'all brought in an external evaluator. How valuable is that, right? Who did, who was that?
For, are you talking about for PBIS?
Yeah, for PBIS.
The Agency for Teaching, Leading, and Learning is the state partnership that we're utilizing.
Okay, fantastic. So, you know, it says something, you know, because there's a lot of talk of, oh, there's problems and people are swooping under the rug. No, we know that this is an issue. This is, this is something we're addressing. Nothing really helps us when you bring somebody alongside you who's not in it, and so they're better able to see the things that you might not be able to see because you're in there. And it really allows for opportunities for growth. So when they were in like a particular building, they didn't just do a building one, they did classroom ones. Like, how many, did they just like pick a few classrooms or did they go into a lot of classrooms?
I don't know the specific number by classroom, but I know that majority of the campuses, they had at least someone from the site that was with them. And then they did their normal school-wide, what they look for. And then they ensured that they visited classrooms while they were on the campus as well.
Well, I'm sure that you have lots of plans to do things with the data that you're getting, right? So what are we going to do with the classrooms at the schools that aren't hitting, aren't where we want them to be? I'm hoping, and I don't know, but just, I'm hoping that you'll continue this relationship with the external because it's nice to see where we are when it's, again, somebody from the outside. Okay, so you don't have to go to it, but on slide 24, on top of building SIP, School Improvement Plan, now there's grade level and course level improvement plans? That's amazing. When did this start? Is this new?
This year.
Okay, because I hadn't heard about it. Okay, great. And then you have the live classroom. So I'm assuming that's schools in session. That's how you have students. So that requires support from the district in terms of subs, right? You need to have a substitute so that the teachers can go. So that's very valuable and very commendable. Family Curriculum Academy. Oh, my God. So here's the thing, fantastic idea. And whenever we involve families, you know that there's going to be return on that. So not that you're looking for advice, but my advice would be, if the first year you do it, you don't have a lot of participation, stay in it. Because word will get out, people will know. There is such a thirst for this, right? The families that are available who are looking for it will jump on board. But then there are families who don't know about it. Once they realize that everyone's invested in their children, well, everyone wants to be invested in their children. So stick with it even if you don't see a lot of numbers. So that's, that's really great. I'm really looking forward to November when we get our MAP scores. This year and really the following year, because then all this stuff will have been implemented. And before I finish, can you send us, especially as we have two new board members, a definition and a list of comprehensive and focused schools? I used to know it, but it's just one of those things, just like a little refresher. And lastly, your last slide, I think, is the best slide on top of everything. So I've been very critical in the past. So there's all these things that we're doing, and what's really nice to see is that these are opportunities for growth. I like that you ended with, and these are still areas that we need to grow and that we're looking at it. And this is really, this is how we do better. Whenever there, there's always something we can do better. And I'm not sure I would have even thought of two of these, but once you put it up there, I'm like, yeah, we got to do these two. So I think you answered all my questions. Thank you. I'm just really sad that I'm going to have to, we were just talking about Kelly Byrne today, about how we haven't talked to him. We're going to have to have him watch this presentation because, remember, he and I were...
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Holt. All right. Item 6.0, new business. 6.01, selective roof replacement for Studi Alternative Center. Executive Director of Operations, Mr. Sean Dilday, will provide information on a roof replacement.
After a wonderful presentation on allegiance to roofing of SPS buildings. So Studi, Studi's roof has lived its life cycle. It is over $500,000, so it needs to have board approval. This will be a capital project for the 25, 26 budget. Because of the dollar amount and because we need to get it on schedule for the summer, I need to get approval for moving ahead with this project.
Thank you. The recommended action is that the board approve the selective roof replacement project for Studi Alternative Center. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Oh, you're making a motion? Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second? Okay. Okay, thank you. Well, we'll take a verbal vote then.
Wait, so you said if there's any questions or comments?
Yeah, that's fine.
I don't have a question, but I already made this comment. I really liked the supporting document we received on this. I really liked it.
The document that should not have been in there.
Thank you.
And now she knows what to ask for. So just so you know, I told you that. Did I not tell you that?
Because of this particular project, that was included.
Okay, well, Board Member Provance?
Aye.
Board Member Smart?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Thank you. Seven votes as it passes.
Ms. Raymond, did you capture the motion in a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Next, 7.01, change orders and agreements. Our recommended action is that the board approve the expenditures as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Board Member Kincaid moved. Is there a second? Board Member Mahad McConney, second. Let's vote. Well, verbally again.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Seven, yes. Okay, 7.02, facility planning, architectural services recommendation. Executive Director of Operations, Mr. Sean Dilday, will provide information on this recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. So with the 2023 bonds, we have had great success with the bids coming in much under budget. And the sale of the bonds has left us some funds left over. So last month, we presented being able to move two more projects forward. This evening, I am recommending that we move forward with Bingham Elementary as a new construction project with Paragon Architectural. And this will be a CMR project as well. And this will be a CMR project as well.
Thank you. The recommended action is that the board approve the fee commitments for architectural services as presented. Are there any questions or comments from fellow board members? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Thomas Tate makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Board Member Sarah Huff, seconds. Let's have a vote. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Okay. Dr. Lathan, do you have some updates for us?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, board members, again. Due to our unexpected school closure on April 30th caused by extensive storm damage to the power grid, I have requested a DESI waiver for the 169-day school calendar requirement based on circumstances beyond our control could disqualify SPS from receiving the 1% state funding incentive created by Senate Bill 727. This would be a loss of $752,467 in revenue. So I have requested that through our commissioner. And so we'll wait approval and I'll update you board members once I hear back on that appeal. The next eight days will be filled with activities as we close out the 24-25 school year. Starting tomorrow, we will have the first of many graduations. Tomorrow is middle college graduation, Thursday, Studi graduation, and then on Saturday, our five high schools. So we'll have over 2,000 students graduating this week. And so really excited about that. Many of you saw the story of the outstanding student from Glendale High School that has leukemia, and she made a commitment for her children to come back and to graduate. So we're really excited that she has completed her requirements and we're excited to celebrate with her on Saturday. Of course, my tradition of the past four years has been to distribute summer reading packets and math to our students at the end of the school year. So over the next week, students will be receiving their backpacks filled with books for the summer. I thank you, board members, for your continued support of this initiative. Two more celebrations as it relates to Proposition S and our storm shelters. Tomorrow at 1:30 at Holland Elementary School and then Thursday at 6 o'clock at Cowdon Elementary School, we will be celebrating the ribbon cuttings on those two storm shelters. Once again, thank you to our voters for approving Proposition S in April of 2023. There are still opportunities for students to sign up for Explore. Please go to our district website. Explore kicks off on Monday, June the 2nd. That concludes my announcements. Other than to say, yesterday, I set out a progress report to our district employees, not only thanking them for their service, but also just providing an update. And also, board members, I want to thank you for your service this school year to over 25,000 students and 3,500 employees. That concludes my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Lathan. Board comments? Dr. Mohammed Kani?
Well, it's more of a question. So the reason we have to ask for a waiver, it's because we've already finished building out the calendar and we're short.
Right, we're short because, you know, we closed.
Right.
We're short because we did not, when we closed on April 30th, and then, you know, we had several schools that needed to be closed. Beyond that, we did not implement AMI, Alternative Methods of Instruction, due to the lack of power and families not being able to do that. So we're not meeting that requirement. And so that's why I requested a waiver. And so the commissioner has the authority to grant that waiver.
So the only way to meet it would be to like have one more day of school?
Right, I could have added more days to the end of the school year. And so we did not do that to come back after Memorial Day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking that.
Other questions, comments?
I'll make a couple comments.
Board Member Kincaid?
On May 2nd, we had the opportunity to attend Celebrate SPS. Always such a wonderful time. So thank you for the foundation for hosting that and thanks to all the honorees and the recipient winners. Always a fun time, always a good time. And then, Dr. Lathan, did I see, we get a weekly update. Did I see that, I think it was this week, launch, we now have 400 partners statewide?
Yes, 400 launch partners, yes.
I just want, I just want to say, that is amazing. Every time I take a tour of the launch building and hear from Dr. Holt, or Dr. Holt, Dr. Lemon and her team, I'm just continually impressed. It's amazing to me that we are able to provide online instruction for students in 400 different districts or buildings?
Districts.
Districts. Across the state of Missouri, we are able to put money in teachers' pockets, public education teachers' pockets throughout the state of Missouri who teach on launch. We have students who might be medically fragile, students who don't have a very stable home life, students who just want to take advanced courses, but maybe they go to a school where they're going to graduate with a whole class of 15 individuals and they can take Japanese through SPS. And so I just, it is amazing that we have this program in the state of Missouri. It is amazing that SPS is the one who has spearheaded this program. And I always read through the weekly update. I'm always surprised to see things. But that literally made my jaw drop that we now have, we got our 400th partner. So I just want to say kudos to the district.
Other comments? Board Member Provance?
I wanted to comment about all the outstanding students that have participated in athletics and activities. You know, you can waste a lot of good oxygen if you want to talk about what came first, the chicken or the egg. And a child's education can't really be marked just by the classroom teacher because a coach is a teacher and a teacher is a coach. And they both offer guidance and instruction and the child becomes coachable. And then you offer encouragement and opportunity and they develop self-confidence. And then when they are challenged, they learn self-discipline and good is good, but if you try to improve every time, good always becomes better. And the, there are so many activities and sports that offer individual competition, but the team sport activities also lend themselves so well to the working environment that is presented in the curriculum, but we know is also going to come forth in the workplace. So to all teachers, to all activity sponsors, and to all coaches, you are such a big part. You are part of a great program in the city of Springfield. I, I'm amazed at the quality of our students.
Thank you. Other board comments? Three board members had the opportunity today to attend Lunch and Learn. Dr. Mohammed Kani, Board Member Smart, and myself. We went to the Alliance for Healthcare and Shalina Goodnight did a presentation about that. And coming into it, I feel like I knew, I felt like I knew some things about it, but I left with even more information and more impressive information in terms of what's actually happening there. I think that was a good move a year or two ago and I can really see how it's, it's really coming into its own. And it's a wonderful collaborative effort. And there were even representatives from Mercy Hospital there today. So it's not just Cox. It's, you know, they're collaborating really across the city. And that's one of the things that, in my opinion, as a native Springfieldian, Springfield really has going for it in a good way. And that's the collaboration that we have among different agencies. Also, in the last couple of weeks, we've had, we've not had to, we've had the opportunity to celebrate our volunteers at a reception and our retirees from this year. And that's always kind of bittersweet because it's, it's hard to say goodbye to people. But, you know, I understand it and they're there and they feel good about it and we celebrated them. So thank you to all the volunteers and just really for the district as a whole. It's really, it's going well. It's going well, even with the bumps that we have. Okay, do we have a motion? Oh, well, let me read something first here. I lost my... Now I've got my hammer. Well, I had to turn my paper over here. This concludes our meeting. We have a recommended action that the board adjourned the meeting. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Dr. Thomas Tate. Is there a second? Okay, Board Member Mohammed Kani is the second. Let's vote and we'll do it out loud since Susan's computer died. Chair votes aye. Seven pass. Thank you all for hanging...